No order?
Yeah. For the mic, so. Okay. I hear something. So we've got that mic on too.
You can't right now.
Hello, hello? Mayor Paul, I was just gonna. I think they're still working on it, so they wanna just turn it off. Let's make sure I'm tracking. So after 4.05, you're asking for nine and 10 to come?
A council member is not getting his or her feedback properly or feedback period. I guess council member can clarify that. Should that be on the what section?
So typically, what council member requests are made to get consensus for council to engage staff further beyond a certain point.
So what?
About?
Okay, I read one, I'm not sure which one it is, but it stated something that he had been requested some information on a number of occasions and still hadn't gotten that information.
So council member, I'll ask. I mean, do you know what that he's talking about?
Yes, I believe that's item number 4.08 that's currently listed. I would just ask to redirect it to the city manager and say, you know, whether or not that information can be forthcoming during that item unless you want to clarify for council member here beforehand.
Well, it's a very unfortunate situation, shooting involving an officer and his wife. It is covered on two principles. One is personnel, which we are not permitted to share, and the other is the investigation is being done by the SBI. That information has been provided and it has not changed. There are, as you can imagine, a lot of interest in a situation like this, and some of it also delves into speculation and questions about transparency. But what we can share, we have. And the SBI is still conducting investigation. I think that will be forthcoming, we hope, soon. But the other portion and a portion that is internal has been completed, and we're not able to share much beyond what we have already provided.
All right, so in the interest of time, council member, these requests, we can deal with it now at the time, but, you know, these requests are for staff engagement typically to get to a point and bring us back something, but it is not to get a consensus to do something that we ordinarily couldn't do based on?
And I'll make it a brief when we get to that item.
Okay.
And if the council is not interested in moving forward with a potential idea, because I think it's something that I'm hoping almost all of us to say, what do we want to do about this?
Okay, all right, all right. Look forward to talking to you. So, all right, council, so there's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Mahandros to, well, Councilmember Benevente, second of Mahandros, to move item 4.09 and 10 up to be 405A and B. Any questions on the motion? Discussion, yeah.
Ms. Air, was your intent tonight for us to use this for voting and/or mics?
Mics, and we are, the mics are working.
Okay.
Um, slowly, right now, we've got a system that's happening while we try and get my system.
So we'll do hands. We'll do hands for votes. All right. All right, council, those in favor of approval of agenda with the modifications listed? All right, those opposed? All right, so Madam Clerk, that's nine to one, I think, no, 10, eight to one?
And good afternoon.
Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, what's your pleasure?
Green.
Can you hear?
Green.
Councilmember, can you hear us?
She said that she could hear us.
We can't hear her.
Can you hear me now? Green.
Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, can you hear us?
Green.
All right, team, we gotta do some test runs before we get started now. All right, so is it green for Banks McGlaughlin?
Yes.
All right, so nine to one. All right, moving, those voting in opposition, council member here. Item 4.01, Mack and Rescue Plan Portfolio Impact Update.
What's that? Oh, there we go, we've got lights, everything. You good, Devin? So we got something?
Trying to turn that volume all the way down so that we can't hear ourselves talk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yep, still there. Correctly, and we want to make sure that we're doing that efficiently. There are currently 40.
We have to have it on because Banks McGlaughlin can't hear you about it.
Okay. We don't have to hear the TV? So there's currently 40 opera project accounts in the portfolio. There are two major projects that were completed of those 40. That's your commercial corridor and your small business assistance retention grants. In FY24, 12 of those projects are active and on schedule for completion in FY24, and 14 projects are active and on schedule and completion in FY25, with the remainder in FY26. Can you fix that? Is that better? Test? You had no feedback. Thank you. So we'll talk about the first strategy, the business and economic vitality. So on this slide, it's a little bit busy, but I really want to highlight where those green arrows are pointing. The city of Fayetteville, from the ARPA award, has invested $1.4 million of the ARPA funding into business located in qualified census tracts. To paint the picture for you, the city has multiple census tracts. You've learned about them from Chris Colley and other elements in the city, but 40% of our census tracts in the city are what are called qualified census tracts, meaning the conglomerate of the community is below the poverty line, or the federal poverty line. That's defined by HUD and several other, used by several other agencies within the federal government. But of note, that map on the right side, you see the blue up top, those are your highlighted qualified census tracts with other census tracts around it. Those are the applications. And then on the green, the map below it, you can see, of course, darker color representing more approvals, where inside those census tracts approvals happened. I would like to highlight that really dark spot on the map, which is mostly the Murkison, Ramsey, and Brad Boulevard corridors. Of that, from your commercial corridor program, $837,000, of that $937,000 that was used, was actually applied for and used inside of those qualified census tracts. On the Covet Small Business Assistance Grant Program, which had a broader scope, which allowed a different range of people to go to and apply to the program, there was still 606,000 of that funding used of the 2,061. And if you have a question of why is one just over 2,000,000 and one just under, as we neared the closing of the programs, we didn't have complete applicants to finish under the commercial corridor, but we had several on the other side. So we made a determination to shift that 61 and be able to fulfill the obligations we had already put ourselves into under that 2,000,000, and then close out the other program in commercial corridor. There were just no quality applicants or anybody that met the requirements of that program left in the pile, so we felt we could shift it over with the city manager's authorization. That took place, I think, late last year. Oh, I'm sorry, earlier this year. It's already late this year. Moving forward, the big note here is that the city's invested over $1 million of ARPA funding in workforce development programs. Over the summer, council has been briefed by Economic and Community Development several times. As you can see, there are several agencies within the city that this funding is going into. The big thing here is those comments that are italicized. This is focused on job skills training, trade craft skills training, general contractor training, assisting veterans who are gaining employment, assisting disabled residents with workforce training and job placement, intern programs for youth and young adults, 14 to 24, and teaching youth in qualified census tracts on visual basic programming and other computer languages to kind of help create that upper mobility we need in those areas. Shifting into the next strategy, on our housing and community livability. This council invested $4 million of ARPA funding into affordable housing projects under the ARPA award. Almost 10% of that award is going entirely to affordable housing projects. As you can see on the right, that first green arrow has that 2 million for the Step Up Hotel, which is gonna be a conversion for permanent supportive housing for homeless, and the 1.25 million for Fayetteville Gardens, which is to rehab 100 units of low-income housing. There are a couple other projects on the docket, I believe Chris Colley from ECD will be bringing to you in the future to close out that $4 million. Second keynote here is that this council has invested over $1.8 million of ARPA funding into homelessness. Unlike anything that we've seen in this city in the past 20 years, that volume of money has gone into that exact problem. That's found in the 1.6 that's been pushed towards the Homeless Day Center with a million for the construction and an additional $600,000 for its operations for the next 24 months, and about $265,000 that went into the Impact Reduction Program, which provides temporary assistance, rental assistance, and hazmat quality and control and reduction. And then the other piece here is that this council also invested $6.5 million of ARPA funding into recreation improvements, mostly in qualified census tracts. Five and a half million of that money went into Mazur Park Tennis Center to finish that project and dynamically shift that corridor and that environment, make that project become everything that it's supposed to be that the previous councils have wanted to get to. It's on track and expected completion in quarter two of FY25. Additionally, it was playground repairs and refurbishing and some other picnic shelters and other pieces that are kind of spread through the portfolio, but the bottom line, $6.5 million of this award has been funded, allocated, and spent on recreation improvements, mostly in qualified census tracts. Continuing on, on the infrastructure and community investment, we've invested over $500,000 into community-based violence initiatives and victim protective programs. That's found in the Prove Project with, it's on its second year now, and it's found with the Phoenix Center contract, which we're in the closing process, and they are now getting ready to tap into that funding to provide victim advocacy and shelter for victims of crimes. Additionally, this council put $4.8 million of funding into public safety focused on support programs. You can see that gunshot detection technology, which is on its way, public safety initiatives, which replaces public safety cameras, updates body worn cameras, and other necessary equipment for our law enforcement and safety personnel. It also put $800,000, or almost $800,000, in the citywide security access. Our infrastructure, our public infrastructure, was not hardened. We did not have a safe and secure posture, and that funding allows us to actually put key locks, I'm sorry, key card locks, and other magnetic lockdown devices that the city needs to go ahead and improve its physical security. Although there is tens upon hundreds of millions of dollars spent on stormwater in this community that council has done, we also did $900,000, or just over that, of ARPA funding in the stormwater improvement, and that can be found in the Dam Safety Preservation Project, which is a little bit of funding to help kind of push the Mirror Lake Dam to its full closure, the Bridge Preservation Program, the Ramsey Street Pump Station replacement pieces to go ahead and fix some of the drainage issues that happened over there, at least through the design, and then several other projects or subprojects. Shifting into infrastructure and community investment a little bit deeper, we have the Public Health Resiliency Column, where we had 1.9 million of this funding that went into improving public facilities across the city. So our campuses, our public infrastructure, our buildings that our employees work in, that our communities go into, require maintenance. That's rooftops, that's HVACs, that's plumbing, all these different range of improvements. $1.9 million of this award has gone into those. And then the last one that I have here is that the multi-mobile accessibility, that sub-strategy or subcategory of this strategy. This council's got $1.5 million of funding that has gone into improving ADA access and roadway infrastructure. Our ADA compliance project that's been led by Parks and Rec, the building maintenance crew with Tim Johnson and everybody under Michael Gibson, has moved through the ADA Transition Plan that was adopted by the city in 2021, and removed 70% of the identified barriers that existed in that plan. So much to the fact that we have to now take some of this funding and redo that plan so we can get a more accurate count of what remains and figure out the strategy and actions to take to go ahead and remove those barriers to our disabled, which, by the way, 20% of this community is counted on the census as disabled. And then, of course, you have Blanton Road Extension Design, a very necessary project, some parking locker resurfacing, and some multi-use lanes pieces in there. And that's in addition to the other bonds and pieces that have been adopted recently and put in place. Okay, so that was fast. I'll be ready for your questions, or we cannot, and I'll just kind of walk around the room, and we can high five. It's your choice, council.
All right, don't think you're gonna get away that easy, bro. All right, do you have some questions you've been tracking? Mayor Proton, who's first, second, third?
No, sir. I thought they could just push buttons.
No, no, it's just limited for mics. All right, so we'll go to Councilmember Benevente. I have a question, and then I saw another hand. Councilmember here.
Mr. Here, were you first? Can we go back to slide six, Housing and Community Livability? Is that 4 million for the Housing Trust Fund allotted for that, and then two separate items with the Step Up and the Fayetteville Gardens?
No, sir. So they are the subprojects of that $4 million allocation council put in place.
I see, so now there's only $750,000 left of that 4 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I guess another question with relations to that final bit, is that, in your mind, or is there an idea right now of what that's gonna go towards?
I do believe, so I cannot speak for Chris Colley, but I know that ECD does have several on the horizon projects that he's prepared and coming back to council in a near time.
Is one of those things an actual community home trust potentially?
So with this award, most likely not.
Okay.
The other affordable housing funds that could be accessed can, but this is not done in that way. This is more of a different kind of strategy. But again, I would rather Chris speak to those, as he can break down the funding strategy used on those. I do know that there are some forgivable portions and repayable portions.
All right, thank you. Councilmember here?
Thank you, Mayor. On the area of training. Slide, Council Strategies, on the area of training. On the area of training, the, where is it? Well, I won't try to find it. You stated that we're doing the training for, you know, for some of our businesses, and I know that was a part of one of our priorities that we received, I think, through that, I guess it was the ARPA money, but funding. Is there any way that we check for successes for that, or?
Yes, sir. So the slide, yes, sir.
Or do we just check, okay, well, we had this number of people that took the class or trained?
So this is an update. My goal is to bring back the defined elements that go to the scope of these awards that were given to these organizations. So when we give money to a nonprofit, we don't just give it, we have, hey, here's the objectives and goals and KPIs we expect you to meet. And so they agree in that agreement, and then are sub-receivable monitored by ourselves and our consultant partners, as this is, again, a stringent federal award. So there are goals and objectives to each one of these programs, and I could bring those back if you like.
So that's the comeback, okay. When I listen to conversations in the news media about homeless and several of my colleagues in North Carolina that I have relationships with, and hearing what they're doing and hearing what we do, what we have done and are still doing, seems like we have such a, to me, a very good bar. Is that something, is that anything that's necessary to look at to see what we are doing and have been successful in versus peer cities, or is that's not something we look at, or is it necessarily?
It's absolutely something we can look at, and I know that when we work to push funding, that we have the ability to put into these organizations. We define measurable objectives. We follow the state law, which has some pretty stringent rules that we have to do. We have a box that we have to play inside of when we do that. Comparing ourselves to other cities, I would say, I only have the experience of local government at Fayetteville, but talking to many of my peers and some of the leadership in the city, we do an exceptional job at putting money into our community. But it may be something that if council requested, it would be worth looking at in a deeper context, but most of them, they push a lot of money out into the nonprofit realm, sir.
I don't want to give you anything extra, so I'm not gonna be making that request unless that something comes from everyone else. But the reason I was just saying that, just due to my tenure here and dealing with homeless and homeless items, I have seen the growth from in the earlier years to where we are now. And I'm very, to me, I'm very, I mean, I give a great big applaud for that, but I was just wondering if that's something that we measured and looked at, because I think we do, to me, I think we do a lot. One more, Blanton Road, I thought I saw something that said 500,000.
Yes, sir. Under the multi-mobile accessibility. That is for the design of that project, sir.
And, okay, so that's the design only, but also, aren't we receiving funding from the state also for that cut through?
There was, there was a request, I think, in the ballot, but it was not included in the ballot.
Correct.
We haven't seen something in the press, but not to my knowledge, but not to my knowledge.
So this 500, turn to it.
Bottom right of the court, of the page, sir.
Okay, so, and the only thing that is, is just for planning and design?
Yes, sir. That's gonna take the project to what's called 100% construction drawings, which would allow to move to the next phase if funding was available, but that is a multimillion dollar project. Yes, sir.
If that's, okay. Thank you.
All right, and council member, when you speak, you have the ability to turn your mics on, and it'll be read to indicate you're ready to go. Mr. Wagon, I'm trying to. Mr. Wagon, I'm trying to reconcile the numbers on the business vitality money. 1.4 has been invested of ARPA funds going to these QCTs, the qualified census tracts. So it showed 930 under the corridor was the funding, but it only, it says it invested 837, but if you did, if you time, 19 times 37, 559, that's only 730-plus thousand. So there's about $123,000 difference there. And then if you go down to the $2 million total funding for the business grants, 46 approvals at an average of 34,000 is about a million and a half. Where's the rest of the $3 million?
So without looking at the financial record directly in front of me, I cannot answer that, but there are fees for underwriting, and there's all kinds of other components that go into that. It's not just the award itself that they receive, there is additional components and administrative pieces for that.
But I would hope the administrative was not 50% of the total allocation. Mr. Manager, if we're going to have an update, we have to have enough information to be useful.
This is the only question y'all have posed so far, but we'll get that for you, that we don't have an answer for right now. But we do have the detailed spreadsheets. This was meant to be overdue, and this isn't the closeout of the project, I think. This is, we have until 2025.
The reason I ask is because, you know, we were pushing people to community development for these grants and money, and they would tell them they don't have any more money. So if there's a million and a half dollars unaccounted for?
There's not a million and a half dollars unaccounted for.
Okay. So a million and a half dollars not accounted for on here?
It is, sir. So 837 went into qualified census tracts, but if you look at the maps on the right, there are several other cells that have shading in them. Those are not qualified census tracts, and that's where the other 1.5 million dollars went, and went across the city, not just in QCTs. While QCTs took an enumerated priority, and we weighed those as a heavier condition to approve them all, but the funding went to other locations outside of QCTs.
Right, but when you're giving the programs' total disbursements and approvals, why wouldn't they put the other census tract information on there with the qualified census tract information?
I can bring that to you to be more descriptive, if you would like. I meant to keep it as light as possible and use a little bit of visual, sir, but I have that information.
Okay, all right. Same thing on the strategies with the workforce, the million dollars. So are any of these programs overlap other state programs? I know FMHA had a workforce training that they did as a part of, can't remember what it's called, section something, but where they have to allow training for their residents. Anything housing authority had that existed that's in line with this, so that we're not spending money for something duplicating?
There are cases in these funding where we are extending a program or increasing that program's capacity. And so when ECD listed this funding out and said, you know, bring me your proposals, in several instances, like the FMHA one, they had a program existing, but it wasn't at the capacity or had limited funding, and they couldn't get it to go. So this augments that and pushes that program to be more effective. And you can look at it from the lens of, why would we take something new that hasn't been proven instead of increasing something that's already made deep impacts and just make it faster and better? And so in that process, Chris and his team at ECD have came through this, and council did see this a few months ago.
So do they have information on how many, the impact that it actually had, how many residents took the training for each one of these programs?
I don't have it here, but we can get it for you, sir.
Okay. All right, and the last question was on the Housing Trust. I think it may have been asked by council members, the total 4 million, two was for Step Up. I know there was some conversation about Step Up. Have we talked to them lately to see if that project is still?
I'd actually defer to ACM Olivera, if she had any deeper insight, as this is still being worked.
You know how to get specific, because I understood specifics is what preempted the conversation that took place about the sales while it was still in negotiation, so no location details, just updates.
Yes, sir. So the folks at Step Up are pursuing the contract that they had in place with the location that was previously discussed. They're trying to work through that right now. They have reassured us that they are committed to doing a project of this nature in our community, and if that location does not work out, they will be quick to try and find another one and get a purchase agreement initiated and completed with their new location.
Okay.
So they're unwavering in their commitment to us. We really appreciate that.
Good, good. All right, all right, that's all I had. Who do we have next?
That's it?
All right.
I think Mr. Hunter says, okay. Well, Mayor, council would say this to you.
Thank Brooke and the team for the reporting and the work they've done, but I'd also like to say thank you to the council. Several of you were not on council at the time, but at the mayor's, developed three separate committees, and out of those committees came largely the framework of what you see here, of how this was created. And the team went out, we had things on the list, some things that we had trouble doing, but through, again, Brooke's work and, again, the larger team, finance, budget, ECD, and some others, the question was asked, how are we doing comparing to other cities? We're doing better than other cities, the same as we did when we had the funding for ERAP, where within less than four months, we expended some $11 million. Our goal was, all along, was that we want to expense our money so quickly and so thoroughly in so many different ways that we are not like many municipalities and counties that are actually turning money in. Let me repeat that. We are not turning money in. And so that means that sometimes plans have to change. We welcome the questions, and we hope that if you need more detail on anything, Brooke is always available to provide it. But thank you, Brooke.
Thank you, Brooke. Yes, ma'am.
So just.
Press your mic, yeah.
So just to thank staff for everything that they did and to give some backtrack of what this, when we went up to Washington, we first got this money, we sat down as a delegation, and I know Councilmember Maher and Councilmember Dawkins, you remember this, we gave our delegation what we were going to spend our money on, and they said nobody had done that and that we had a plan. So due to staff's good work and council's work at the time, like, just to low bang out, we spent everything and are ready for them to give us more.
All right, all right, always take more. All right, council, moving to.
How would you all like to do those?
I mean, it was a presentation, unless you need some formal action.
Well, this would be a good time to. To just clarify, this is something I would like to do for council items on the work session. For all our church folks, do I owe anybody any change? So what from this do I owe you that we need to follow up on and give you?
Yes, sir, you need to bring that basket back around.
Well, I get that, and we're going to do that, but specifically, what information are you requesting from us so that you feel comfortable at this time, and when would you like to see it back?
So, me personally, the questions that I had about the number of businesses and where that 2.9 million went.
Yes, sir.
Oh, questions about the business loans and the 2.9 million.
They were turning it on over there. I asked, is there any way that we measure the success of our job skill training, you know, not just sitting in the room, but there's some way that we can do the success? And if you have time, it's no big hours need to be spent, but on the homeless issue, I would just, you know, just want to know maybe just how much more we are doing versus, and maybe that's an email you can send me, I don't know if it's anything everybody is interested in, but because I've been here and I've seen where we've been at one time to where we are now, I'm thinking we've done a lot.
And then the missing 750, not missing, the 750, that wasn't discussed in detail. I'm curious about what plans we have for that as it relates to the land trust, because I guess what I think of when I think of land trust is very specific, you know, that's an area where we're making sure that development is, you know, protected in some kind of way, and I know we're doing some really great projects, but that's not necessarily a land trust, so. Well, earlier it said 4 million, two went to Step Up, one and a quarter went to some other project. There's still 750 left to discuss, and I think maybe we should discuss it being for a land trust.
Well, that's a new initiative is what you're talking about.
Yes.
So for the land trust, and I take this as my way, we brought it up, it came out of our housing study, and what was recommended in housing study was that we add probably like 1 million to that. So we had two options that we could add, pull from the money for the 1 million. One was from ARPA, and then two was the bond, yes. And so what we, where we are, last time I checked, we were in policy form as late entity that would form to run the trust fund, I mean, the, yes. And so we were in the phase of policy and also finding a nonprofit entity to steer that. Thank you.
All right, gotcha.
If I may add a little bit of clarity, I hope, to my question. So with the ARPA funding, because we are under such a tight timeline to get it encumbered, we have one year and two weeks left to get it encumbered.
Who's doing it?
Staff has really tried to make sure that we had projects lined up, that our community partners are working on to provide affordable housing, additional affordable housing units in our community, that we could use the ARPA money for that, then knowing that we had bond money that we could kind of supply for the housing trust that has no expiration date on it, not any time soon.
Yeah, that makes sense. We don't need to have money just sitting there not working for us if we can make it work for us to be, of course.
And we have had several of our local partners approach us with some wonderful projects that they're trying to work through and get plans developed on, and we certainly, when they're ready to go, we want to have some funding available for them.
All right, thank you, council. We'll move to next item, the city council meeting date calendar.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We don't have to take a lot of time on this, you'll be seeing this again, this is your annual calendar that's in front of you. Pam and Jennifer have done an excellent job, as always, of trying to account for the actual meeting dates that council has. I would say that there is one date that we did modify the sequence of events, if you could describe that.
Yeah, that's for, the purpose calendar shows that Monday, March 11th, regular meeting moved to Thursday, March 14th, to accommodate council members' attendance at the NLC conference in DC, which we did that last year because we had more than a quarter to attend that conference.
Thank you. And the only other thing that's not included at the moment as well is actual blocking off the times for your annual retreat, and we will be bringing that back to council to ask you to block off some dates for that. And then, Mayor, before we move on, I did have one item about the meeting schedule for this year that I wanted, I don't know if Jennifer, if you've had a chance? Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Sir, Councilman Mahendra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I can't speak for May of 2024 just yet, I know we're in the budget season this year, those Thursday 5:00 PM meetings were very difficult for me. Is there a reason that Thursday at 5:00 PM instead of Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday at 5:00 PM? And does it have to be 5:00 PM? Can it be earlier or later?
That's just the way they set them every year.
Stafford before 10:00 AM.
Perfect. So I move that we move those Thursday 5:00 PM, it's specifically May 16, 23rd, and 30th, to Thursday 10:00 AM, or something other than 5:00 PM.
All right, was there a second to that motion?
Second.
Yeah, it's just consensus, since you're making a change. So is there a question? You had a question, councilman?
Yes, so Councilmember Maher, I remember you stated that we used to, I guess, meet during that time. I just want to know, as a historical, if you used to meet to it and then it changed, why did it change in the first place?
From 5:00.
Did you remember? Sorry, anybody?
Yes, yes, ma'am. There were several councilors who worked on Fort Liberty, and by their schedules, getting home and being able to come down here, they were not able to get off much through the day. What we can do, if you would like, understanding that as we get closer to the time, depending on the number of issues that we have, we can always come back to council with a modified meeting schedule just for the budget work sessions, but this is really a placeholder, but if that's council's consensus, but you will be asked to vote on this at an upcoming meeting, but so if there's a desire of council to modify it to another time or date, that will be helpful, but really, those are really just placeholders that y'all can come back and we can modify as we get closer to the budget season.
Yeah, because the budget season is not a six, it's.
It's as needed.
All right, thank you, Councilman Jensen.
I guess what I was going to say is, I know why that it did get changed, and, you know, I'm fortunate that I can move my schedule around during the day sometimes, but I think that would be for the next council to decide if we have it for a placeholder to go from there. I mean, that's three weeks out if somebody is working at a job that.
All right, Councilman Thompson.
I was just.
Hit your mic.
Why do we take the entire month of July off?
Yeah, I'm going to say.
I'll be disappointed.
Let me rephrase the question. Why 30 days? Why not two week breaks, two two-week breaks? Well, I think that most of the governmental bodies, after they pass their budget, take a break, like, even like the legislature, travel with family and to do things like that, because usually August, you're back at it. Mr. Mayor, they've been on break all year. I'm not going to touch that, not going to touch that. All right.
Move on just very briefly. Staff, this may not be of interest to the council, and apologize, Mayor, I meant to have it mentioned to you earlier. The work session for November of this year, I think, is on November 6th, is that correct, Pam? And I think election is on Tuesday, November 7th. There's usually always a kind of rush at the end of the, at the work session on the first Monday, so that people are able to be available for the election day on November 7th. If y'all would give some, have a conversation with the mayor, Mayor Proton, and just provide staff with direction as to whether you'd like to move it later or earlier or not at all. You don't have to make that tonight because it's somewhat on topic, but we'll just let the mayor, Mayor Proton know, and we'll adjust accordingly.
This is always going to rush.
All right, council, any other questions on the calendar? Only thing I would say is, you know, as the new council comes back and, you know, I'm fortunate to be back, I would hope that we do the budget process a little different. So if that requires more time, then we need more time, and we need to have earlier meetings. So, Mr. Manager, I know you're making your rounds, but I think this is mainly for you and yours on that. Just to make sure that we don't have a process like last year, if we could get an extra meeting in there earlier, so we can start the whole process earlier, that would be something I would suggest, but again, the new council could make that decision.
Yes, ma'am, we will do that. You have a consensus motion on the floor to change the.
Change the meeting time, I thought they had pulled it back and decided, the new council decided. You still need consensus on that? You want to change it from 5:00 to another time?
Do you know when we're going to vote on these dates, even if those are just placeholders?
It will become. I'm sorry, Mayor, for me. The actual works, this will come back to you typically on consent, but I'll ask Pam and Jennifer to circulate it around with the changes or discussions we've heard about. But specifically, I think it was, was the consensus around the work session this year?
No. It's for the three days in June, May, to 10:00 AM from 5:00.
May 16, 23rd, and the 30th.
Yes, sir.
To 10:00 AM. That's the consensus motion.
All right, is there consensus to make that change?
One, two, three, four, five.
Change it to 10:00. Councilmember Banks, McGlaffon?
Three.
At 6:00.
All right.
All right, moving to next item.
All right, moving to next item. Item 4.03, reduce compliance times code enforcement actions, dangerous buildings. Dr. Newton.
For those who've just come on in, a couple logistic items that we've learned. There's a little mic here. When you see that, that means it's hot. And they've been working through that so that they understand that. And then also, don't touch the screen. It will jump spots. Okay, all right. Last time that I was in this room, it looked a lot different. And when we had a big conversation on an important issue, we were talking about what do we do if we should annex this area to the north? And I'm looking and seeing the mayor, Mayor Protem, former Mayor Protem and senior council member, who are the four who still are here from when we had that conversation about annexation? But when we looked at that annexation and that ETJ, since then, we've had twenty-seven annexations because it was an intentional decision made by this group, and we've added over eight hundred and fifty acres. Now, we need to have another conversation about all this land use stuff. But that idea that we have added more than 1.33 square miles to our city, the last time you had an actual meeting where you discussed something that really mattered to you. I'm glad that we have this opportunity to talk to you now, because what we end up doing is we need to focus on that intentional reason why we do certain things. Why do we do the certain things that we do intentionally focusing on it? It's because of what you do then that gets to the surface of tangible proof of why you do those things, where you put your funds. And for those extras who will be introduced later, we're doing things, and I believe every one of you has elected and are doing things because you are entrusted and you with some important thing, and you are spending a lot of time thinking about why you're doing the things that you're doing, not just the what we're doing. Tonight, we've been asked to look at the what and the how, and it's the third time that council has heard this different ways. And we want to help in any way that we can on how do we get the city better and cleaner? So when we get to this why, why do we do it, that's something that individually each of you look at. But collectively, you've said over and over, I've heard it in nearly six years, about we need to be doing more, but it's not just the people in this room, it's not just those who've been elected, it's those who are actually the people in those spaces. So tonight, you're going to be hearing information that deals about how we deal with reducing code enforcement time on private property. That's this item. And how we might deal with some of those getting cleaner stuff in the public space. That's the next item. City manager asked if we would also fold in some of this other information. How does development services actually work to constantly working that stewardship mindset to improve the services that we're providing? How do we do that? What's it look like? How are we helping the customer? But as much can we view ourselves as partners in development, not that they're the customer, not that we're that way with them, but that we're this way with them? And how do we get all involved in the development and the redevelopment of the city? How do we do that? Well, it doesn't necessarily deal with that big issue of the why, but I do think that by spending a little bit of time, you're getting to see some of the individuals that are working this. And recognizing the city of 208,000 plus that we talked about in the proclamation, you're seeing almost on a one-to-one to the council, the number of people that are involved in code enforcement for the city and those issues. I'm joined then tonight by members of the code enforcement division, they'll be introduced in a little bit, the assistant director for the department who oversees this activity, Dave Steinmetz, chief building official, Jason Everidge, and our newest member, as a direct report to me, is our development services and solution center manager, Alex Magania. Alex, by the way, you'll be hearing from him in a little bit, but he came to us due to my connections to the university, work that I do, and with the military, specifically the U.S. Special Operations Command and their fellowship program. So as he was completing his work, as he was finishing his military service, we had an opportunity, because of an agreement that I have as a, in my university work, that we're able to have Alex start as a fellow, and now he is able to come in and serve our community in a different way. So we're going to get into what you asked for with a reminder, and this was all, almost all in your packet. But because we were asked to do a few extra things, we have another PowerPoint that I'm going to have Alex, if he'll come join me up here. I'll start him. And when you get up here, you'll also see there's hardly any room, and if you hit the wrong thing, you're going to probably knock something out. So this is not in the material that you had before, but we were asked to pull this together, and I want to share quickly and then turn it over to Alex. This idea of customer service and survey work that we've been doing, you'll hear about this. But I, in my work that I've had here, I started that in 2018. I want to hear what the customer had to say, find improvements, find improvements, find improvements, keep refining, keep adjusting, work those things. You'll hear a little bit more of what we've been doing over the years on that. But I think part of that begins, if you go to the next slide. This recognition that we're really talking about the partnership idea. It's not just customer, and also, we have to look at whenever we're doing customer service, the third party. We have times that people are asking and they are not involved in the transaction. Sometimes they're asking for things that we can't share. It gets annoying to them, but we try to be real careful on how we're sharing the information that's publicly available. This idea that I mentioned earlier, stewardship mentality, that God entrusts us, well, that's for me. I'll put it in the general. We are entrusted with whatever we've been given, to do the very best that we can, whether it's with other individuals or our community for the time that we have it. That mindset permeates through our department, that we are doing the very best that we can to help people. And that runs from me through others. It came with the manager when he selected me in the position about six years ago, to do that idea, to work with the development community, the redevelopment, work with those that live here, make the place better for the time that we have it. One of the things that we also deal with is this idea of let's have civility. Let's be kind to each other. If we can get an answer, be quick. Let's be prompt on it, be as accurate as we can. And when we're giving people an opportunity to make a decision, that we give them enough information that they can make an informed decision. Do we always get all this stuff right? No. But I can tell you where we are in our mind and our hearts in pulling those things together. One of the things that we always have to do is we have to address what kind of issue we actually have in front of us. Is this a process that we can improve? And the answers to all of these things are always there. There's always something we can do better. Is this a project issue that we have? Is it inspection? Is it with enforcement in planning and zoning? Or is it a people conflict issue? How do we deal with those things? We take time to investigate so that we can get the concerns, the real concerns, out, and we actively listen. That's a big point that I want to make. When we have our customer in front, we are looking at them, we're listening to them, we're taking notes, we're doing things, so we make sure that we understand, we actually parrot it back. Did we hear you right? Is this really a concern? Big item, and right beside our chief building official, and right behind JR, James Rutherford, is a QR code that if you haven't already downloaded, I hope you do that. Because this is one of the examples of something that's sitting over at the development center where anybody can come in and they wonder what's going on? Did an inspection go through? What's happened here? What's happened there? That QR code gets you right to it, whether it's on your phone or your computer. You can see what's happening. For a twelve-month scrolling, twelve-month period, we've done that same thing for code enforcement. You want to see prior codes? There's a QR code and other things that we have available for you. This idea of transparency becomes a really significant issue, because what it allows us to do is it allows us to keep moving forward, and when people say, well, that's on you, you didn't do something. Well, maybe we didn't, but let's go see. That's part of that ability to look at information. The survey work that I mentioned that we've been doing earlier, one of the things that I have learned and instruct, and we see it all the time, I'll use it as a real practical thing. My wife and I took a vacation on our anniversary, for our anniversary, and we rented a vehicle. When we rented that vehicle, we got to rate who we got it from, how well that service was. They did the same to us. It's the same thing that's being done in industries, it's done in so many places. It's called a two-way rating. We have some people that when they interact, they're just plain ugly in how they treat people. Not all the time, but they've learned over some course of action, if they rough somebody up, if they're really rough, they get their ways. We have a way that we track and don't have where our employees have to put up with that. And I make that as a big part of this. Taking care of customers involves taking care of our employees. If we can't take care of our employees, it's a really big challenge. It's a really big challenge because the strain and pressures that's put on, that are pushed on, put on them all the time. So we have initiative, a take twenty. Someone's treated you really poorly, or they're doing it to you over that, at that center in the front, they have permission to say, hey, I have your name and number, I need to step away, let me get somebody who can help you better than I am. One of the things that I know from the academic world is what's happened in the post-COVID, how things that used to be this are now this, and it's the exact same activity in terms of how people react. It's a very interesting phenomenon that people are studying as to how quick the triggers are in some things. And as I pointed out, another quick point in the customer service. We searched, we worked, and we have a great new development center services and solution manager, Alex Magania. I have two pages. I'm not going to go through each of these, but I want to show you these to, before I turn it to Alex. Each activity that we have, each division that we have in this department knows how they handle the customer, how they listen to the customer, what can they do, how does it work? So from planning to permitting, it happens right over there, to inspections, which is usually on the job, to code enforcement, and then within our administration, all the way from the manager to my level down, we make sure that we are trying to listen to the customer. Alex is going to share with you in a quickened version what that looks like and some of the things that we have underway. What I really like about our department is we find ways for those that are in and doing it to make it better. And we listen to the customer. I have it in a quick fashion, but we have a simple kaizen effect. If what you're doing can be improved, try it. If it can save the city money, try it. If it helps the customer, try it. If it works, document it. Those little incremental changes that we've made over a period of years are making and producing really big results. So Alex, if you'll continue this, and then we'll get in, we'll get into how this continues to churn.
Okay, just real quickly, so city manager, members of council, mayor, thank you all so much. Kayla, I can't, I have to thank you as well. Thank you all for being here tonight. Just one quick introduction. So my name's Alexander Magania, came in under the Special Operations Command Fellowship Program. Dr. Newton sat down, we had a conversation, and hit me with some good questions upfront, and it really sparked an interest in serving the public. So I've been within the Fort Bragg, or now Fort Liberty, community for over a decade now, accompanied by my wife, who is currently a nursing student, serving over at the Cape Fear Clinicals, and then two children. So my son Adrian and then daughter Callie, and recently retired Army infantry officer as well, so that's a little background about myself. But coming into the position now, we've wanted to discuss the, I'm going to next slide for you. So the customer service survey, and how we're serving the community and actively listening, as Dr. Newton mentioned, to some of the responses, whether it's a negative, positive, or indifferent, we're listening. And so this customer service survey was initiated July of 2018, and the combined effort and awareness of all of our staff has contributed to the services and solutions that we are providing and how we're moving forward with this, so. So when I first arrived, we had the initial surveys paper that was being dropped off and filled out upfront that still continues. All we ended up doing was taking that and making it automated. So the digital access to this customer service enabled quick response time and feedback to the customer experience. The current data insights reveal that if a customer initiated that survey, and this is online also through QR, at the front, there was a hundred percent completion rate, and the typical time spent to complete that survey was one minute. So that's what we're currently discussing with the customer. They show up to the front, keep referring customer, but realistically, it's a partner in development. So that's how we are viewing them, that's what we have expressed to our staff. If somebody walks in that front door at City Hall, the first people they're going to interact with are going to be security, and then they're going over and they're seeing our permitting text. So if someone's coming in with questions, regardless of what they are, our department or not, we're assisting them through and getting them to where they need to go, so providing them with the solution. The responses by hour indicate that a spike of time in submission is nine AM. So here's a snapshot of some data that we have collected from the inception of this survey. So 2018 to 2019 data. What I want to point out on this slide is that, so you can see it here on the far left. So the process is long, but every situation is different. Wanted to emphasize that real quick. So every solution is different, and we are here to walk through the process alongside the public as a partner. So every solution is going to have a distinct timeline associated with it, and this is all, this can be seen within the IDT program that we have just switched to as of August. And there's a cycle, a project cycle assigned to each one of these projects. And that gives the partner in development an idea of what it is that they need to do step by step to ensure that they reach the completion of the permitting process. So 2019, 2020 data. Here, I'd like to highlight one, and so the, one of the comments on here, and we have a reduction of permanent fees. Well, as explained to a lot of the contractors that I've had personal experience within my short time here in conversation is the prices that we have and the permanent fees are in line with jurisdictions that are our size. So you're talking about Cumberland, Hope Mills. And so it's having that conversation, get to know the public, and more so the customer relations. So trying to establish that, because we are long-term partners within the development of the city together. This one here, so it goes back to initially spoke about, so somebody walks in to the front, we had this the other day. So talking about parking and the machines not taking credit cards, some confusion with some signs. Well, what we can do is, you know, try to refer them to who is that they need to speak to, but taking it a step further, getting out there, getting that information, taking it, documenting along with their parking tickets. So you have a sign that indicates that parking is free from this spot on in twenty, for twenty minutes. Well, they're receiving parking tickets. And so being upfront, assisting the customer through that, it allows us to establish that relationship with them. So they still left, they pay their tickets, but we have documented, we documented the proof, we've been able to provide that over to who it is that needs to see this. So just getting that information to who it is that needs to see it, so the subject matter experts behind that. 2023, 2024 data. So here, the one I'd like to highlight is the acoustics, the pay window, and that's, they need to be addressed, is what we're seeing. So some of the complaints that we received have been targeted at the setup at the counters, and we have planned workarounds. and we have planned workarounds for this. So it's not just us sitting here saying, hey, look, this is an issue. It's us saying, we recognize this issue, and we've taken the initiative to, if we have to, because, so there are some contractors that have issues, hear issues. I work here in AIDS, so I can completely understand where they're coming from, you know? So struggling with disability is something that, you know, I understand. And I know we have some other folks in permitting that also, you know, experienced that. So if I'm on the other side, I can't hear. So made it a point to take them to the side, understand what their needs are, and then assist them through their personal points of friction. So where are we now? As discussed before, we have the 100% completion rate, typical time span, one minute, seven seconds, and we're currently standing in the 9.1. So that 9.1 is great, and we want to highlight that. And we'd like to recognize, you know, currently here, who we have in the room, the code enforcement officers out there doing all these inspections, conducting all this work, all this great work that oftentimes is, you know, it's not forgotten, but what we focus on is that 0.9%. And I just want to acknowledge y'all real quick. If y'all could stand up real quick, code enforcement? Yep. Yep. Yeah. The great things that y'all are doing for the city, and so we appreciate that. We wanted to make sure we highlight that. So where are we going? So the way forward, all this being said, this is some of the things that we're doing, some of the initiatives that we're taking to ensure that we are listening to that 0.9% and we are responding. So the launch of IDT. IDT has gone live. Everything is now handled online. So the requirement for the customer to go through and do that all online is great because it allows them to receive the email, they go through, and they take care of everything they need to without even having to step foot here. On the flip side, if somebody does need assistance, we encourage them to show up. We encourage them to come see us because we will take care of them on the spot, and we will address whatever it is, the issues that they are experiencing, and they will leave here satisfied. And that is my personal testament to the point forward that we move.
So by a raise of hand of council members, how many know what those three letters mean, IDT? Yeah, when Alex first started, we had a whole bunch of words that were jargon and phrases, and realized that we had just done that, and I apologize for that. This means that you can submit plans anytime, anywhere around the globe electronically. You can submit for inspections anytime, anywhere around the globe as you want. It's the system that we use, portal is the word that we tend to say. It's the portal that we have where the person who has done a project can see what's going on. It's the area that we found out where homeowners, business owners who have contractors sometimes getting different messages weren't included on that, and now are being included so they can see what's actually happening. So whether it's a plan review or an inspection. So this IDT manual means that we are updating things to help and make it more easy in different ways, working with marketing and communication on it. But that's what that one is.
I appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions here.
On that one, can we, this is the last slide on this.
Sure. So FATTI team, we're going through, and we are hearing the concerns, frequently asked questions with our partners in development, and we're starting to make some implementations within the manual itself. So we're changing it to reflect some of the things that they maybe were not aware of that they needed to fill out. Some of the stuff that has been brought to our attention, we're going through and editing that specifically for the city of Fayetteville. So that's where we're moving forward for the user internal and external, the supervisor working groups, and weekly syncs.
And Alex?
Yes.
I know we hate to do this for the first presentation, but we are short on time.
Yes, sir.
So if you could go to the last slide.
Yes, sir. This is the last slide.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
So what I want to do, Dr. Newton, before you go on up to the next question, this was an add-on, and I want to thank you and Dr. Newton for taking your time. This is an add-on that was requested mine and the mayor's. Thank you.
Sir, this was an add-on that was requested mine and the mayor's to really highlight all of the work that you and the team are doing. In particular, most of the council, only a few of the council members remember, that I came back to the organization in 2015 for one purpose, and that was to work with the team that was downstairs, some of them are still here with us, to improve our permitting inspections department. My favorite assistant of all time is back here in the back and worked with me very closely along with Jason Everich and other people. And just a human thought, the only man I have ever kicked has been Jason Everich under the table when we were meeting with some developers who were being somewhat difficult. But the mayor's and my interests really centers around to the council and to the public who are listening. We're here to help. I think that's what Alex said, and that's what Dr. Newton said. Do we get it right always? No, we don't. But if you give us an opportunity to fix it, we will do that. But we can only do that if you communicate with us and tell us where you're having sticking points. The Kaizen method, I think I said that right, that he mentioned is something that Dr. Newton truly believes in. And, but again, the end all be all is, we're doing great, we're serving the public, and please let us know how we can do better.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hare and then Ingram.
Ingram, Ingram first.
Ingram, then Hare.
Thank you. Two questions. And I think I briefly mentioned it to the city manager. So based off of what I know through research and through what has been told to me, the city is mandated code enforcement. Am I speaking correctly? We are mandated by the state code enforcement, right?
Well, let me clarify. It's building code enforcement, which is building inspections as we locally or colloquially term it.
All right. So for a city our size, is there a quota that we would need for code enforcement officers?
I think as we move into the second one, you'll be hearing us answer that.
Okay.
And if not, make sure...
So should I ask my final question of it, just so I know for sure? Are we at below or above code enforcement officers?
I think that when you look at the slide that Dr. Newton has in one of his 60 slides for these two weeks, yes, I said that.
We still can stretch it to 60 if you want.
No, sir, you can. Is that you'll see that, I'm leaving my loss's face in body language, so I'd hate to move along a little bit. But we are probably the busiest, and I think our permitting inspections, code enforcement people are handling approximately about 1,095, if memory serves, cases apiece per year, which most cities, Greensboro, I think Wilmington, are under 400. So they're very busy, but they can always do more.
Okay, so my final...
But you'll see an answer to your question on that when we get to the last slide.
Okay, so my final is for repeat offenders of individuals who say if I'm 80-some years old and I have to demolish a property, and I hire somebody to demolish your property, but they don't get a permit, and they just go ahead and demolish it, but I'm stuck with the fine. Do, if we know we have repeat offenders, how do we handle, how are we handling them?
We will address that also in this presentation. I think it's slide 28.
Thank you.
But we will cover that. So in terms of the first one, just wrapping up what city manager and mayor asked us to look at, we know that we don't get it all right, and if we, if any of us think we are, we're not thinking very well. But we are doing a lot to try to improve the community. One of the things that I really liked was when I was given something from the code enforcement folks, when I made a statement, I said they're like the guardians of the city. If you watch any of that Marvel comics and things, they do stuff and you never know it. They're doing an awful lot of stuff that we never know, and they gave me something because of a phrase that I used. But that gets to part of why they do what they do. They want the city to be better. In the issue that we're getting ready to move into right now, this is one that council member Hare asked to be brought back because the last time it was brought up, we had some options that were shared. Those were then put in the administrative report last Monday. We turned it, added a little bit to it as we were requested. So we are going to move into that part on the code compliance, how to shorten the process. But to the manager's point, and not to be lost in any of this, because sometimes when we talk, some of the major points get missed. When this was done the first time and it's in your packet, and it was done by our SPA, Strategic Performance Analytics looking at it, bottom line was, we were doing twice as much with half as many people as our peers. And we can continue to do all this work, but if we want to get to what's really going on, it's not just more enforcement all the time. It's trying to get real pride in the ownership or the rental of the places where people are and how to continue to do that. So we're going to move into how we have presented some information before. JR and Dave, again, as Assistant Director, Dave oversees the activities in code enforcement as well as permitting and inspections. So I'm going to find a seat if there is one and let them take over. Mayor, if that's okay with you, but I also see that you have a hand raised. Dave?
Councilman Hare had a question. Well, not so much that it's a question, but just a thumbs up. This is, and Johnny can attest to this, and I think, Dino, you weren't on council then, but you're on the UDO. This goes all the way back to what, 19, well, 19...
18.
Okay. And when we, some of the things that we talked about in those meetings have produced, like for example, out front, the new area out front, how we brought that from the rear up here, the little, what was the thing you said we scanned?
It's QR codes.
QR code. That's something that came out of those meetings that now, look where it is. But one thing that I just want to say that's very, very important, I hope we'll take, pay even stricter attention to, is when we put people on boards and commissions, we had stakeholders out of the community that played a role in our UDO committee, builders and just regular folk and contracted electrician, on and on. And they help us build what we are doing here today, and that was a big thumbs up. I remember they're so, so, so clear. So thank you, Doc.
Dave?
Dave Steinbrenner. By the way, everybody that works and reports directly under me grew up here at least one generation, some of them three, four, and potentially five generations.
All right. Good evening, mayor, council, manager.
Good evening, sir.
I'm just going to run through and introduce our code enforcement team real fast before Mr. Rutherford gets started. And as most of you know, Jim Rutherford is the division manager for code enforcement. We got Derek Planner. Most of you have met with him. He's one of our supervisors, and you've seen him from demos. Daniel West is another one of our supervisors. Anna George, if you want to stand up for a second. Primarily North Ramsey area. Priscilla Limbaugh, Southern Ramsey, Marks and Road area. Chris Day handles downtown and special assignments. Terrence Moore, Massey Hill on the east side. Crystal Campbell, South Bragg and Haymont. Victoria Herring, Northern Bragg area and Yakin Road. John Denninglake is not here today, but he handles Raleigh Road and Morganton Road areas. Tammy Smith handles Hope Mills Road and Bingham Drive, general vicinity. And Alan Pulver has the west side, Rim Road, West Rutherford Road, that general area. So you can put a face with the people on the road.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Council. Let's get right into it. Reducing compliance times, obviously it was a request from council that we bring this information to you. Almost to the day, two years ago, SPA presented a presentation that had some options. Chris Lowry and his group put that together, presented to council. Council heard that and, you know, listened to it, and we moved on from there. No substantive changes came out of that. On this slide, this is the code enforcement dashboard, one of the things we talked about, the who you're going to call brochure that Mark Com did an outstanding job helping us put together. It really helps us. We've taken community watches. But the dashboard, if you pull it up, it gives you real-time data, last 12 months. So this one shows 14,499 cases. All the data can be heat mapped, it could be downloaded, exported, you can do all kinds of fun stuff with it. So it's transparency to the citizens, and it shows everybody what's going on. So you can actually hover on one of those dots and click on it and actually find the specifics on it.
I'm looking at the case type down the side. What does that, does that representative of the types of cases other represented on the map?
Those are all the cases. You can actually select certain ones to show. Case type CE waste would be solid waste cases.
Is that 47% of all the dots on the...
Currently, it is, yes. Not for the fiscal year, but just when this snapshot was taken, yes. So as the manager said, solid waste is our problem. That's our bread and butter, our go-to. That's what most people have the biggest concerns about, as you can see, half the cases there, give or take, are solid waste related. Zoning are next, and then comes your vehicles. They take up the majority of the cases that we do. 68.5% of those cases we do every year are proactive. Council wants us to be proactive, we are proactive. We go after people. We still receive a lot of complaints. We address those a lot of times, as we see here down the road through the process mapping. Sometimes those complaints are not confirmed, if they are. We run through all the different decision boxes that have to be made. This is a mapping of a process flow for a solid waste case, and it takes it out to, in this case, it was day 23. This came from the SPA presentation. So in 21, the quest options, there were six of them. Most of them rested with the education and pushing people to get us the information more quickly. So get us that C-click fix, get us that email, call the 1056 number, you know, come to us directly so we can get on it, get looking at it and see what's going on there. In 21, this is what the picture looked like. We closed 94.7% cases, 94.7% of the cases were closed. The average close day was 29, 153 total. One in seven cases were not violations. So we go out there, look at it, it's not a violation. We still spent time, energy, and effort doing that. One of the things to note is that substandard structures, zoning, fence, accessory structures, those have much longer compliance times because of the type of case they are. So when we are doing a fence inspection, they, for, not for violation, but for a new fence, that's one of the types of cases we have in there, and they have a longer compliance time. Also with substandard buildings, we have to give them longer than, you know, 10 days to repair their house or their fire damaged building, et cetera. This is the current fiscal year 23 data. You can see we're right there at 94%. A solid waste case carryover was 197 out of 13,700-plus cases. Interesting side note, we want to do some compare apples and apples. Wilmington, we're at 31.2, they're at 51.1 days. And they do about 3,000 cases a year with nine people. They still are clocking those numbers.
Will you say that number again, please?
51.1% or 51.1 days to close. And they, you'll see here on the next...
Same number of staff?
They have nine. We technically have a little over 3,000. I'll get to that here in a second.
We got it the first time.
These are the charts from the SPA presentation. You can see, once again, the blue is the solid waste, is a pretty consistent, the, on the bar graph there, the second one, solid waste, 22 days. Okay, so keep that number in mind. Here we go. Where now, this is our current data. We have a more seasoned staff... We're now, this is our current data, we have a more seasoned staff, because there were a lot of new faces back in COVID, a lot of retirement, we have a lot of seasoned staff now, a lot of very committed people that are passionate about what they do. That number's now 19.3. Okay, so we're chipping away at that number. So keep in mind, that's days to compliance from the time the case is opened, okay? Not from the date the case was opened to the time it was closed, 19.3 days for solid waste, and that's the bulk of, you know, over half of our cases there, 51%. Once again, you see the substandard building, takes a while there to get those worked through. The more complicated cases sometimes are dealing with zoning and building. These are the 21 peer statistics, this is what Dr. Newton keeps talking about, the number of FTEs we have. Councilmember Ingram asked, do we have enough people based on what we have? If you, if you took it by population, the benchmarks would, would say our numbers are where they probably should be. But it's not based on that, in our world, it's based on what our expectations are of how much, what level we want to keep a city at, where, how much work that each person has to do. You can see these other cities, some of them are just complaint-driven. They don't, you don't call them, they don't do anything. And they also have the advantage of some other places where, you know, they have a lot of HOAs, and they have a lot of other buttons that are being pushed. So I think a good one is that number, Raleigh, we're almost.
10 times the number of cases that Raleigh's doing.
Right.
Per person, per inspector.
So this is our, yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
So, you know, I remember this came up one time before. Now, if you go back to that page.
You know, it's, it's, it's hard to see, and first of all, let me say, I think you guys are doing a great job. I think the technology is a great piece to it, and to the improvement that I hear, and the compliments that I hear from people in the community, businesses and otherwise, the ease of doing it compared to like the county. What I will say is, when we talked about this before, the fact that you've got 14,000 cases here, and we've only got 200,000 people, and you have a place like Charlotte that has six times the population, I mean, let me use Raleigh, your example, they have a third of the cases with twice the population, and these are old population stats I see.
Yeah.
But, point was, is that there are almost 1,400 things here that trigger a violation. How does that compare to our peer cities? Because you are, your team is working harder, doing more, but it's not necessarily yielding a better-looking product, you know? So we talk all the time about how other communities don't have some of the same struggles with trash, and with dilapidated, and, and, and building structures, and blight, right? And so I think it would be hard-pressed to say that we have a better-looking outcome, even though we're doing twice and three times and four times the work compared to our population. So question is, how many things trigger your offices to issue violations? Which I think adds to the frustration of the, of the public. They say, Jesus, I got a, I got a fine for doing this and for doing that, but then, because you're so thin, it takes 47 different actions by you to demo a house that is burnt down and really causing a problem. So how do you compare the number of things that trigger the violation by city?
That, that we haven't done. I mean, it's, we handle certain things that other code enforcement organizations probably don't, other parts of the code, but we've been given our, our, our pieces of the code to, to go after and, and.
Well, this might be more for Dr. Newton, where's he at?
Well, I didn't take that one.
Yeah, we talked, we talked about that before.
I got it, Jer.
Raleigh had, like, if I remember right, maybe 200 things that triggered a violation, and we have 1,400. So have we ever?
Yes, sir. If you'll go back to the slide that shows that 47% is solid waste, and it was one, yeah. And so when we look at what the bread and butter of, well, this is one snapshot, you had to know that I thought was actually a pie chart.
Yes, this is the, this is fiscal year 23.
Right. And so when we look at the list of those items that are generating the bulk of your work, those are likely some of the same ones that are represented there in Raleigh, junk vehicles, solid waste violations, zoning, substandard buildings, signs, the fence was a, was a unique issue, streets and sidewalks, building trailers are a real nuisance, some, I think, to you guys sometimes, because people have trailers which are over length, and they park them in the yards and not the front yards, name graffiti unlocked, but Philly, 51, 14, somebody else would run Matthew, I know that's not my, 65, and then 13 on zoning, that's almost 75%, almost 75% of those in those three areas. We can definitely go back and take a look at the 14. I looked at that a little bit different. I was concerned that we're actually ignoring some things that we may be asked to be enforcing just because we're spending such an exorbitant amount of time on the solid waste, but we can definitely pull that to look at it. But the solid waste, and what makes us unique, I think, than other communities, is that in Raleigh, and particularly in Charlotte, there are such pressures on development that you have a lot of redevelopment that is occurring in those cities. In some of our neighborhoods, we talked about the land bank, and we talked about the work that Chris Carley's doing, and some of our older neighborhoods, we're looking for redevelopment. I've had conversations with several of you, not to belabor this point, but with several of you where you knew the people who lived next door to you, Mr. Hair, and then they move away and nobody's cutting the grass, and that, something like that, a house so close to the university, a major university, a state of North Carolina university, you would have had a lot of pressures, even gentrification that would have taken place. But that is a real concern, Mayor, and we can definitely take a look at what triggers ours compared to others, but 75%, it looks like, of the violations in the last fiscal year are within what we would say, consider the bread and butter of the department.
Of course. You still have Jensen and Hair.
Yeah. All right, and last question, on the survey results, how are you capturing that? When on the previous slide, when you went through the survey results of the comments, did you, did you give us a good snippet of all of the comments with the various conversations? Because it was some real lightweighted comments in there, you know, about parking change and that kind of thing. Did you leave out any comments?
Yes, you do have a compilation of all the comments that are provided to us, there are no.
Yeah. Guys, when you give us the presentation, give us as much of the detail as you can without overburdeness, but just give us the pretty stuff, we've got to be able to see the other stuff, so that's the benefit of a survey.
You got Jensen and Hair.
Yes. We, we will do that. If it hadn't, if we hadn't clipped it a little short, I was going to point out what you saw in the 23 data, we were getting people either very positive, or we're getting those on the negative. If you look at the prior years, we had very few of the negative, but when you saw the data, that material that we just shared, you're going to see we have some really strong negative things. Those are the ones that we really want to hear, they're called the black swan effect. We want to see what's going on that's causing that, and why are we having that happen? So absolutely, that information informs us an awful lot, and my apologies if we weren't sharing or bringing that out and trying to snap the presentation shorter. I'm going to tell you to do double clip on everything you're doing from this point, so we can get to keep it moving.
All right. So we've got Counselor Jensen, and then Hair, and then we'll let them double time it so we can get to the next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess I'm going to piggyback off of one of your questions, is that, you know, we have 14,000, 1,400 things that trigger it, and you said Raleigh had 400.
Yeah.
Have we as a council set up a committee or something that?
So I brought, this is a council member's question, you all blessed it to review it, but we left it there, right now. So we did not stand up a separate committee like we did UDO, but we may need to.
So what I, you know, I'm going to go back to the policy committee, you know, we have all these questions, and staff is doing what we've told them to do. So until we decide, or we look over it, and that's not a work session, that's, that's more than a work session for us to do 14, and what I'm seeing is, is that maybe they're just, you know, chasing, every day, they're chasing the car, and there's a new car that comes, because there's 1,400 things they have to look at.
Right. And what I'll do between policy and the UDO committee that Mr. Hendros is going to get to, if he can ever wrap up his other obligations, sounds like an interesting.
But is this, is this part of the UDO, would we say?
Well, it would, it would be somewhat.
See, I don't see it as part of the UDO.
I need to probably correct a few things, just really quickly, apologize. When we presented the survey data, we would definitely give you all the raw results, so I would be remiss if Dr. Newton and I didn't clearly say that the surveys that we're showing you are people who took the time to fill out a survey. And so people who do that are either extremely happy or extremely mad. If you're really talking about customer surveys, you really need to dig into and talk to folks who just leave. And so that's part of a larger process, and that's some of the things that we did back in 2021 as well, where you'd do focus groups, we'd go out and talk to the home builders, and people who don't, who, some people are afraid to talk to or give a negative comment because they feel that will impact their relationship with the developers. So I couldn't leave and make you think that that survey is the end-all, be-all of the best, because again, Dr. Newton and I know, but clearly what we're trying to show is that there's a focus. And if you look at the average, though, of the survey data we did provide, every year it was above nine out of 10. So even if there are lower numbers or very negative comments, you still have 90% approval, again, of these kind of self-selected surveys. So again, I think there's something to celebrate, but we could not leave without telling you that there's also a different way to do that. As it relates to the group that is in the room, you have code enforcement officers who enforce the codes that you put in place. You also, and so you have, your only way, if you don't want us to enforce grass cutting or to a certain height, and even that, the state mandates that it, how it's written, is for infestation of rodents and other stuff like that, and so sometimes you go past someone's house, and it's like they need to cut their grass, that it may not be a code violation as it relates to the technical reading of our ordinance. That's one segment, that is JR's group, and that is, I can't remember your name, sorry. Yes, some of the folks on that side. But then, when we look at Jason Average, Jason Average, as the chief building official, has the responsibility of enforcing the state building code. And that is where anyone, Mr. Hair, the mayor, Mr. Dawkins, probably Ms. McNair and Ms. Jensen as well, and definitely Mr. Hendros, have experienced when you're developing property or renovating it, and that is not a local code. You do not have the ability to go in and to say, change the state building code. We enforce the state building code. The UDO is somewhat different. That goes to how you talk about how you want your community to be built out. That can be everything from setback requirements, landscaping requirements, driveways, and some other access issues like that. And that, of course, is something that the mayor indicated he'd like to take a look at. But under those three, you have a whole development umbrella, one that you can control fully, which is on the code enforcement side, and one that we are required to enforce, which is on the state building code side. But in the, I know that, Mayor, you have a few more questions, but I think the real meat of potatoes of this was to get back to the recommendations that talked about how to potentially shorten the compliance time. So with that.
Yes, sir.
Were there any questions?
Yeah.
So we do have Jensen and Hair.
I'm, I'm.
All right, Counselor Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And, and I think that's where the most important thing is, is for us to see how we can shorten that period of time down. And it, I heard tonight that maybe that's see if it needs to go to this committee or that committee. Well, our great staff here that we're applauding, they already got some things that's in place. Let's just look at those things that they have in place, how we can shorten it and move forward. For example, like if we have a 31, 31.2 days on the time, the time that a, a complaint comes in, or overgrown yard, or whatever the case may be, and let's just say the cutting of a, of a yard, because I deal with that a lot, and it take us, unless I'm wrong, it ta, are you saying it takes us 31.2 days? Okay, I'm glad you're shaking your head, but it feels like it's longer than that. So if I'm wrong, please correct.
For solid waste violations, it's actually.
10 days.
Well, the, the average is 19.3 for fiscal year 23, but we give a mandated notice of 10 business days from the, the time that the notice of violation goes out. So that may be a day or two, it may be over the weekend, the complaint could have come in on Thursday and wasn't inspected until Monday.
Okay.
The notice goes out Tuesday.
And I want you to move forward, and I got you, I want you to move forward, but explain this here to me and how we get around this, because I hear so much that our inspect, inspectors are not supposed to go into the backyard. Is that correct?
Okay.
Well, and the reason that I'm saying, because if you go there and you cut, and then I still get the call, or someone else still gets that call back, hey, Mr. Hair, hey, so and so and so, that's what we used to say when we was growing up, so and so and so, they still didn't do the backyard of a side of the yard, and so it looks like that time is longer. That's what I, I face.
So I think you got two things working here. One, you've got probably staff recommendations on how to cut the time down, I think is what your interest is on that, but there are also the actual things that caused the violation in the first place, which council will have to change that, to say that this is a violation, or no longer a violation, or, or, you know, some of the things that I think we're in the weeds on, I think it may take a committee-level exam with staff's help to get to. So, all right, so.
Yeah.
So we just don't leave here with nothing.
No, no, no. He's going to come with, with something.
Say the third time.
Yeah, Dr. Newton's got it.
So pushing through, there was, there's some, you know, some solutions we could look at, reducing the actual amount of time we allow for compliance. That's code-driven, the code would have to be changed, you know, you've got options to take it from calendar days, or business days to calendar days, that removes four days automatically. And the people who are going to comply, maybe that affects their behavior, maybe puts them on tighter one, maybe you go from business days of 10 down to eight. There are some options of going straight to abatement, straight to citation, there's possibility of using the administrative fee that typically is only used right now for when we do abate a lot cut, the code, the way it's written, and the city attorney has had discussion with us about what we may or may not be able to do, but that, the code has a provision that says that you can charge an administrative fee whether it's abated or not. And then this number six is a big one, that's a big policy decision, and that's extensions. That's, there's a lot of reasons why extensions are given, compassion, some of them are things you would have to do due to service to the owner, or, or maybe the owner's deceased, or maybe we have to do title searches, or accurrence, or the mail came back, we have a new address, the person moved. There's a myriad of reasons, those are all covered in the administrative report on the extensions. And sometimes the citizens pick the phone up and call the members of council, or the manager's office, or even us, asking for more time. And currently, that's a policy decision that we work with people to try and get compliance, and if that means they need a few extra days, then that's probably the path we're on now. That's a path we could change if we, if the council directs that. Just popping through the rest of these dangerous building. Strategy, we, this is from before, from the March presentation, a lot of this is the same material you saw, the number of days. Some of these things can be whittled down, just it becomes a policy. Some are mandated by state law, the number of days in the hearing order, a lot of it we can whittle down if we work, have tighter deadlines in purchasing and contracting, routing, that kind of thing. Some opportunities that were shared in the March work session. Our current situation, this is something that the council has interest in, when this was done, we had 130 open dangerous building cases. The administrative report broke those down by all the different categories, but two of the major ones were cases where there's already an ordinance, a pending ordinance or an owner demo, there's 28 of those, and 25 of those, 130, were under repair. We're on an accelerated case, or path of taking, typically we used to take two to four per month, now we're taking five to six per month to try and work these through. With that comes the need for funding, to be able to fund those. We've been working with economic community development, they've been great to help us out in the areas where there's qualifying census tracts that don't have other issues that allow those. So we're looking at through Christmas of this year, end of the year. So we're looking at through Christmas of this year, end of the year, we're projected to need $243,000, $44,000. We have 170, give or take, so we're going to be short 74. And if we keep this up for the first half of next year, that's another shortage totaling, you know, $359,200. If we take those all to demo, and we all have to pay the bill on all those, and work through all those. So that, again, is a council decision. This is the breakdown of the cases. Council can see. There's a lot of different, people are out there, they're working on them, they have permits, some are under hearing order with permits, some have a demo ordinance with a permit. They're just trying to get through there, and we're trying to be stewards of the city's money and weigh that against the needs of the whole, the whole organization. They also asked about nuisance properties, that's a, Councilman Ingram, you asked about the repeat offenders. There are, there's a caveat in the UDO for any repeat offense of Chapter 30, within 24 months, you can be issued a civil penalty right off the bat for doing the same thing. Chapter 30 only. The other chapters don't carry that, except Chapter 14 has, the council made a great move back in 19, 2019, they popped in the nuisance property ordinance, it's 14-131. And what that says is, it's dealing with the solid waste violations and the junk vehicles, okay, or nuisance and abandoned vehicles. If you have four violations in 12 months, you are found to be a nuisance property. We send you a warning at, when you get three. And when you get four, we have a finding, that finding is appealable to the Board of Appeals, and then if you don't appeal that, you're issued a civil penalty for it. There are some escape routes there for illegal dumping, vacant lots don't count. And if you hit a number violation, you get a $1,000 penalty. You can see the stats there, we've had 231 warning notices since '19. There are no currently open nuisance property cases. So that tells me, that shows that people are afraid of getting that letter and that fourth finding. We also are working with code enforcement on pursuing nuisance properties. We have several of the captains, lieutenants, and the command staff come to us, ask us to work with them on certain, certain locations. Sometimes we're doing the reverse, we go on search warrants with them occasionally to, we're included in their warrant, we go in the building. Council voted on two of those properties, the Orange Street properties, those were ones where they were using one building as a nightclub and the other one as a grocery store. So we work closely with the law enforcement to get us access to places we normally can't. And then if you're looking at some staff adjustments, yeah, adding code staff for improved service and caseload reduction to try and get us closer to what peer cities are doing, there's some numbers there. If you want to do some drastic changes, that would involve a lot of additional work on cases, and they wouldn't be able to handle 1,100 cases a year. And there's your options.
Thank you for that. Can you go back to the nuisance property? Because I saw you, I think you were trying to answer my question, but my question was for contractors that are doing work on behalf of myself, the resident. If I'm paying somebody to come do work where they need a permit and they are not getting permits, and they're just doing the work, and then months later, I get hit with a fine, but I can prove that I paid this person, I get, I get, that's, at that point, it's a civil issue? But that contractor, because they are proven to not kind of operate of good ethics, do we keep a file kind of on them?
That would fall in the realm of Jason, the building official.
That's what it is, if you are a general contractor and you start doing work without a permit, then you can be turned into the state. But for some of our demolition contractors, I'm not sure if there's a requirement for you to have a license, is it over $30,000, general contractor?
Yeah, depends on the scope of the project.
It just moved to 40,000 yesterday.
Yeah, and so we would turn, turn those in. Quite often when there's a demolition as well, we have some residents who realize that the city can demolish it cheaper than they can, and in situations that they come in and they ask us, said they'd rather do it themselves. I know that Derek and others tell them what they need to do to demolish the property themselves, but that does happen.
Okay, so, so I think we zeroed in on demolition, because I asked about demolition, but I just, in general, is there a way for our residents to maybe make a complaint so that these contractors that are taking their money and are not doing what they're supposed to do? That's my biggest concern, because a lot of the individuals that cannot do the work themselves are senior communities, and they are being taken advantage of. So that was my biggest concern.
I think the answer to that is yes, if it's a licensed contractor, they can get turned into the state and possibly lose their license.
All right, Councilman Gis.
That's called a bootlegger. That's what happens, if they're not getting, you know, a bootlegger comes and says, I'm a general contractor, and I'm... My question is, and you might have said it, and if I missed it, I apologize, I saw that we had 130 dwellings that are on the list to be taken down. Is that correct?
More accurately, it's 130 dangerous building cases that are open, and at some point along the process.
Okay.
And the categories were right here, you can see where the different ones are.
So how many of those do we have that are waiting to be demolished that haven't been?
That we have demolition ordinances on?
Yeah.
It's according to my list here, it is eight, 15, yeah, 21, and then we have another five from September, and you'll be seeing six this month.
Okay, so that's 32. So I heard, and what I was, when I was listening, I heard that it was said, you know, we want to be cognizant of the money that we're spending, and I get all that. But my question is, if we went and at one, got a contractor and at one swoop did all 32, wouldn't we be saving money just because, yes, just, and get them all done, and then, because I'm hearing that law enforcement is getting involved, that people are, you know, did I just open up a can of worms?
No, ma'am, we have, we have a list that I thought I sent to you of more than 100 buildings. You have a lot of buildings that the fire department has posted exterior firefighting only, and those buildings too meet the condition that can, from my research and discussion with them, can be torn down, but we will get that to you. But your idea of taking care of the ones that are in the hopper right now, we can definitely come back with that.
And that's why, I guess, I got the number of, I guess, do we do a concentration on that? I mean, I know that there is a building that I went up to bat for five or six years ago, and if I could do it over, I wish I didn't, because it's still standing, and it's still not, you know, where it needs to be. So I guess my question is, you know, is that where we need to be concentrating our efforts so people will say, you know, I need to get my stuff together and get it up? And sometimes, for the city to tear it down, you're right, it's cheaper, and they can start off fresh, just my opinion.
All right, Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And my question is about finances also, because if I remember correctly, according to your slides, how many penalties have we assessed, and how much have we collected in penalties? And if we're paying $360,000 to demolish these buildings, how do we get our money back?
So in order for us to get our money back, we'd have to collect when they sell the property. We could put a lien on it at the time that we spend the money, but if they never sell it, then we don't get it unless we wanted to foreclose on a lien.
So we're going to continuously take taxpayers' money to create vacant lots?
We also use some of Chris Colley's limited funds in those properties that can be, but this in itself is, Mayor, Mayor, pretend the council, we'd be happy to come back and talk to you specifically about this, but I think the chart that showed $359,000, we literally run out of money every year.
Right.
And for some of the areas where you don't see constant turnover in development, it is because you have properties which are vacant, not habitable, without significant money, and they're just sitting. But that gets into another issue that the council hasn't talked about recently, which is private property rights, as well as gentrification, that sometimes there are some houses, and when they're gone, they're gone. When you look at old pictures of Fayetteville in our downtown, there were block after block after block of businesses and homes, and then they're placed now, some of them, we have parking lots. And so, but we'd be happy to come back and talk to you with a more detailed conversation about that.
Want to follow up on this, Mr. Manager? Are we assessing the penalties correctly to make sure that we're putting pressure on them to do the right thing?
I believe we are. Would you agree, Dr. Newton and JR?
I know, I know that we are doing all that we can to assess those. Part of the collection issue is a, is a real issue, because there are people who don't have to sell, so the money just sits there. One of the areas that I think it combines to what you were just hearing from the manager is, there are some options that appear to be there, legal is looking at that, in terms of how can we maybe accelerate some of that? What we tend to find is that, to, to the question of, how do we deal with those people that just don't care and are repeat? Some of these things may answer that, that he's alluding to. And that balance of property, individual property rights versus collective is a big deal too. Often, I think you're hitting the points that we were hoping to hear from some of those.
Thank you. So a quick question for the attorney, before I go to Councilman Benevente, what, what are the city's rights if they were to foreclose on it, for the lien? So what does the statute say about that? That have a dilapidated structure, we find, you're kind of like they did this gentleman's hotel across the street about the out-of-compliance window. They were moving forward with action against him, and then he chose to sell it. So how, how does that relate to out-of-compliance properties that get to a certain dollar amount that makes it feasible for foreclosure?
The city is permitted to foreclose if it wants to. The only time it gets complicated is if there are county taxes or other county fees owed, then you have to do it in conjunction with permission of the county. But otherwise, if the city expands funds to otherwise improve or demolish a property, then the city can recover those.
Because I think you would have a lot of investors who are doing infield and rehab work, that would buy it at a foreclosure process, rather than sit there 15 years with a lien on it, until somebody decides to come in and look at it. I mean, you have people calling all the time about that, so, could be a possibility. I think, yeah, council could say, we want to, you know, under these certain conditions, we want to move forward with that. But I think Councilman Benevente had his hand in.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. Is this the last slideshow that we're going to have today? Or are there a couple more on this issue?
If we could go to the recommendations page.
I was...
Yeah. Specifically, I think what we would be asking, and Councilman Hare's timing is impeccable as always, this was presented in some form to council, almost exactly in this regard. If there's an interest of council to do something with this, or to study it, we would welcome that, and just tell us how you would like to explore that or have it come back.
Well, yeah, I want to kind of give direction the same way we did to Mr. Redding when he asked about, you know, what were some of the points of interest. I certainly have a couple that I'm curious about, but one quick question, the nuisance property since 2019, slide 26, are we saying that no one since 2019 has actually had four violations in a year? Or gotten to that point?
No, there have been 17.
There have been 17, okay, I have to make sure I understand that.
17, and there was five of those that actually got a fifth or subsequent. I think there was one that actually had six. But there are none that are currently under the warning, warning window, which means they've received three, but their, their first one dropped off, so there's nobody in that three window right now. So there's no cases that are currently open. So that shows me it's a very effective tool.
Okay.
And council made a great move with that.
Understood. And then, you know, I'm looking at that flow chart that was on slide number, it's probably towards the beginning.
Yeah, that was from the SPA two years ago.
Slide four. That's the current process, correct?
Substantially, yes.
I think about day 23, when we request an E Court summons, at this point, we haven't gotten compliance, they've gotten a couple of 10-day opportunities. Could you say more about how that goes once E Court issues a summons?
Okay, well, it's, it is after that point, typically, we have a, a non-abated notice that goes out, that it basically informs them, they have so much time to come and compliance, or they're going to be sent for the entire 10 days worth of civil penalty. The environmental court or the legal action typically is set up, there are still cases that we cannot go to E Court on. So there's a lot of the cases that we have, that that's the only resolution, and this is in the city attorney's purview, is that they'd have to do a lawsuit, asking for a judge to order them to do something.
So then Attorney Pulliam, I mean, could you say a little bit more about your experience or the city attorney's office experience with getting to that point, we have now made a request of the environmental court, they have now issued some kind of summons, saying that, you know, indeed, this person is not in compliance? How do those typically go from there? Do we eventually get compliance now that a judge is involved, or?
It depends on the, at that point, it's a defendant, you know, if they're not...
Typically, overall, your experience?
The courts are, the courts work with the defendants and give them many opportunities to comply. So we go month after month, continuance after continuance. If any progress has been made, we get a continuance, we come back the next month with, the inspectors go out and they bring new pictures, they bring new case notes, they're visiting and inspecting, and, I mean, we've, we've taken cases over the course of multiple years to get to compliance.
Well, and I guess, I can imagine for like, big-time developers with many properties, that kind of, I'm sorry, I've seen a lot of hands, somebody? Oh, I can understand, you know, maybe for some big-time properties, that can be a game that we play for months and months, culminating in years. How often does that happen with cases that, I think Councilman Hare was talking about, I get similar things, we're talking about just individuals who are dealing with properties that they're not maintaining, do those ever get to the E Court process and then take months and months and months and years?
Yeah, those are the cases that we're talking about.
Oh, every time, never mind. Well, I guess, then, again, case to the senior staff for this department, I also want to see some kind of information on, when it comes to those cases, are we talking about elderly folks who really can't, you know, make that, you know, dollar figure happen every month to keep their property maintained? Are we talking about folks that are, you know, doing the hoarding thing, and it's a whole nother level of, you know, work that we've got to do intensively to help them out? I guess, I want to have a better understanding of what this population looks like, so we can think of some alternatives, you know, even if it's an investment on the side of council.
We can definitely do that. Most of them are air property, where you have multiple ears and no one is really paying attention, just someone is paying the taxes locally. And to your point, that is something that staff does try to look at, but it still has the same impact on the neighbors.
Of course.
You know, and so those are, but it's almost without a fault of White House that burned on Rose Hill Road on the way to, that we were talking about, it's tied up in air property. It took us two years to even get the authority to go on the property, or it took longer than that, actually, to get on the property, to abate it, and the property right next door, it has the fence around it, it has a no trespassing sign on it, would create the limits, our ability to even hire a contractor to go out and do things. But we can definitely get you that information.
Yeah, because I think that reducing the window isn't necessarily going to force more likely compliance. more likely compliance. And so we really need to get to maybe some of the root issues that most of these folks are dealing with that are making them less likely to comply. You know, maybe it's not that they don't want to comply, it's that they are incapable of doing so. And so maybe we need to talk about a very different strategy than just closing the window on them, which they wouldn't be able to comply if it was years or if it was five days. So that's not really changing anything.
Well, I guess we've got to look at what percentage that is.
Of course, that's what I'm curious.
Yeah. You've got absentee landlords.
Certainly.
All right, so Councilman Jensen, Hare, Thompson, any of you guys, we've got to wrap it up and get to the next item.
Okay, so I'm going to wrap it up. So what I, so what I will say is, I really believe that, Mr. Mayor, you need to set up some type of committee or something to go through this. Now, I will tell you that it is too long, we're waiting too long. I had a house that was condemned and a squatter moved in. It took me eight months to get this squatter out of the house. It was in Kenwood. They brought, they brought in people that terrorized the neighborhood. It took, it took staff time, it took police time. The police were out there at all times, and our hands were tied. So, so what I will say is, this is very serious. We need to talk about it. It is an awkward conversation, but the more that we allow this to happen, and it's going to take you all one time to get a squatter that you have to deal with, and you will definitely change your mind.
Thank you. For one thing, I'm happy, so I applaud all the council tonight, that we're not going to let this thing just sit down or shut down, even if it means putting the committee together like we did, you know, for other committees that we do, the little ad hoc committees that we do. Mayor, I was wondering if there was a way that we could just, and I know this is the legal part, where we could just go straight to the lien or go past that, for example, depending on, step by step, depending on what type of concern it is, let's just say cutting grass.
Hmm.
Okay? If we could, if there's a way to speed that process up, even if it means the city cuts it as we do sometimes, I know sometimes we turn over to contractors, but what, that can be done sooner than, okay, you go out there, you cut it, and you piece or cut it. Because I get complaints all the time. You piece or cut the yard, or you don't cut it on the side, or you don't cut it in the rear, or they cut the front, and I don't know what our inspectors do. You guys have to let me know. If you only can go and inspect the front where you can't go to the rear unless the person next door allows you to come in their yard to go back there, then the folk are still suffering, the houses on the rear of that. So I'm all for us putting a committee together, because this thing can't, it can't, it can't die tonight. All right, so, I agree, so what council could do, as you finish this, is get a consensus to give instructions to come back with more strenuous timelines, come back with some of the information for you to consider as to what's causing the non-compliance, whether it's air property, that's one process. Yes. That can be separated real easy. Affordability. Because that's not going to be but one every 10, probably. But it could be something like that, we have exceptions for air property, or, you know, owners are under, not able to make the decision because of. I second that motion, Mayor. Physical illness or something. Yes. So, at the end of this, you certainly can do that. It's very important, yes. And then we'll get them to come back, and not as administrative reports, because there's a lot of due back information tonight. Now, are you also going to put together one of your ad hoc committees for us to do? So I also propose that to you. Yes, sir. That we can, you know, the, I think, what did we have these committees scheduled to come back to? So the point was, is that we all give them a specific goal and a time to end, and so I think that the clerk was setting up for the existing committees to come back, tell us where you are, let's close that out. I think this is something that's needed. Yes, sir. You know, in addition to the first part of the presentation with all of the things that make us four and five times the rate of everybody else that cause violations and that kind of thing. So I think we have some conversation to do, but I'll be glad to do it. Let me go to Councilmember Thompson, Ingram, and then we'll look to get some direction to them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think everybody needs to understand that one way that we keep our community safe and vibrant, and the aesthetics looking good is through code enforcement. I thank Allen, who takes care of my district, and he does a great job. But I want to bring to the recollection of some people sitting here about a case in Shenandoah that has been going on for over three years. Three years trying to get one property cut. Three years, and it still looks bad, right next to an elderly couple who keeps their yard looking immaculate. I'm not going to get into the gist of all of it, but something needs to be done, and something needs to be done now, because this process is taking too long. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And council, maybe some of the consideration, if that's the property that I think you're talking about, that gets in compliance and then, right at, yeah, so it may be something that we can do to trigger a different response to that, so that staff can come up with all of that. Councilmember Ingram?
Yes, so this is very briefly, kind of going back into what I was talking about, but most importantly, what I listened to earlier when Mr. Alex was up speaking is more about how if there was an issue, they were kind of going above and beyond, and so what I wanted to lean more into is the licensed contractors, general contractors. Are we able to provide a process to them, to the resident who has been, I would say, taken advantage of, or as Kathy said, what did you call them, bootleggers? Yeah, are we able to provide them the process to make a complaint to the state? Are we able to give them that information?
So, on the state general contracting license board website is a link for that, as well as the AG's office, but I think it may be, there may be some confusion about what they regulate. They regulate people who build things. Now, what you do with some of these cases that you're talking, you get some of these tree cutters or different people who come out, take advantage and charge them, and then put the stuff in a non-compliant way. They end up having to pay.
So I'm looking for a process for us to be able to really protect people that are paying to get this, because if they're paying to help us with this.
So maybe we can wrap that up and.
Yeah, I'm looking for that, because it's not, it's not right.
So I don't know where we are with business registration, but there could be some ability to look at that, but the general city has been kind of really reluctant to allow more oversight on business operations.
Right.
They removed our ability to do business license. Mayor, I don't think anybody else.
They got Condros, and then I'll ask them for encompassing action.
I would just recommend to my constituents or all residents to get a license and get either insurance or bond information from the contractor before they pay them. Never pay them a front.
All right, you had a question.
I just, well, I guess I'll piggyback on that. Also, have your contractors pull the permits. So sometimes the contractors will ask the residents to pull the permit and then do the work, but if you have the contractor pull the permit, they're responsible. But to Councilmember Hare's question about fences or no trespassing signs and the contractors or the city being able to abate, you know, homeowners have a right to their privacy and their property rights, and so if there is a no trespassing sign or a locked fence or something like that, then we are not permitted to go in that area. So that does prohibit us from, and if it's occupied, then for the safety of our code enforcement officials, we don't generally abate properties.
And some of what we're going to speak on, as far as we could do this ordinance and this ad hoc committee phase, not all of this is going to be something that can be policy-driven. You're just going to have some folk to hear about bootleggers or shade tree folk through the community, and it never makes it to like downtown or them to even know, well, I need you to go get your license.
Exactly.
Get a permit, so some of that stuff gets stuck out there, and it's just.
Which is why I was asking if we could put it into a process. Thank you.
All right, so council, this is an opportunity for you, based on account of what you're hearing and the manager has repeated, there is a huge interest in having staff come back with some options on cutting down the length of time, the number of violation, repeat offenses, and how to deal with that, the amount of time involved in demolition, consideration of foreclosure of the properties, so that the city can recuperate some of the money that is expanded, to expand the demolition process, and other things. So did that capture, did we leave off anything?
And just the point about maybe even get a better understanding of who it is that we're getting to that last A for, and we're still having to do it. And I kind of want to get that perspective, you know, even from our code enforcement officers who are saying, hey, more often than not, if we just did this one thing, it wouldn't even have to go to environmental court. You know, if we could just support them in this one way, all of a sudden we're avoiding, you know, some of these hamster wheel situations. So I mean, in that, in identifying that, I think let's rely on our code enforcement officer experience too.
Yeah, it's, Mr.
Yes, sir. On the screen, we have, we have developed the options. I think that most of what we're hearing, and Mayor, we can definitely bring this back for full consensus, is to shorten what we have and what we have presented to you guys before, which was the calendar days versus the business days, some of the things that they had in earlier aspects, and we're bringing that back to you so you can see what that looks. But what was, some were surprising, but also I think it's welcomed by the staff, are the concerns about those code enforcement issues which fall out of the norm. Fifty percent of your code are solid waste violations. Another 12, I think, are zoning, and then it was like 15 or so that were vehicles. That's the bread and butter of what we deal with, and if there's a way for us to shorten the compliance time with that, I think the recommendations that staff developed in 2021, and that we've heard you tonight, we can take care of a lot of that. Mayor, the idea of a committee is very, very helpful, because some of what you want to do, it does fall into different realms. As Councilman Benavente said, if we lean one place, is that going to have an impact on elderly? Well, we don't have programs to necessarily go and help the elderly, so we want to know that. There are also the issues about nuisance properties, which can be torn down, but we don't run to the money, have enough money. So Mayor, really what I'm looking for is, and your list is great, was very close to what we had as well, is there a consensus for us to bring you back the items that are on the screen that we had developed from 2021 and included in the presentation, as well as to answer those questions and work with the committee that you may be setting up to delve into those a little bit deeper?
Mr. City Manager, are you speaking to all six of one or two out of the six, or one out of the six?
It is looking at, what is it, councilmen to accept all of the proposed strategies to.
With modifications.
With modifications, yes.
Yes, that's one item.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
It's disputed.
All right, so the consensus.
We're asking the mayor to do the whole meeting.
All right, and so also interest in those things that you all have talked about.
Yes, sir.
All right, so it's a consensus motion for that, those in favor to accept. All right, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, she's still there?
Banks, everybody.
All right, that was 90 minutes, guys, so that was important, that was good work. So, thank you, Dr. Newton, you and your team.
Well, yes, on tonight's agenda, there was some confusion about that we would have an item on traffic calming measures. That was something that's an administrative report that the council had expressed an interest in hearing at the work session, but due to, I think it was the timing of when this agenda had to go to bed, that item has gotten moved to, is it the November work session? And we will have that for you at the November work session.
Yes, sir, you need to sit him up at the front of the classroom.
He's coming to the front.
Always doing the slip out. Oh, my goodness.
Oh, he's just getting into work.
I know it.
All the way down the hallway.
All the way down. All right. Y'all ain't tired? No.
Did very good work today.
Thank you.
Did very good work.
Well, that's not going to save him from his next item. All right. All right, council. Mr. Gibson?
Yes, sir.
We've been waiting on you, sir.
I know, I know, but I ain't up here by myself now. I'm going to share some of this pain.
You the man to get some of your crops from the city manager.
Council, Mayor, what we're going to do today is have a robust conversation about how we manage our right of ways and our streets. The Public Services Department has a few slides on the bottom end of this, but I'm going to start out with what Parks and Recreation and right-of-way maintenance do. Hey, we have our department duties, and how we manage, and what our purpose is. Code enforcement still has a, which I, which you all talked about for a period of time, how they handle the illegal stuff and what doesn't pass code. We did this chart for our Gateway Committee to make sure that people understand how things are enforced, from Parks and Recreation to solid waste to code enforcement to illegal dumping, and how we manage those things with our phone numbers, what those definitions are, and how people get things abated. So that's a.
Took a while to get that put together too, but it makes sense. From a right-of-way standpoint, here are the areas that we maintain or we do something with, from spraying to street sweeping to edging to littering. Rapid has been an instrumental part in helping us manage what we call illegal dumping, from our mowing to catch basins to potholes.
From a Parks and Recreation standpoint, during the fall of the year and then in the spring of the year, we have, what we attempt to do is what we call edging and vacuuming, and here is our streets that we do from a edging standpoint, and most of these are major and minor thoroughfares that we do. We go through the city where you have the most cars and the most visibility. So here is where we tried to make sure that we're vacuuming those areas, edging up the curves. We start out, we start with a, and I mean, there's some maintenance issues.
How many machines we have?
We only have one, yeah. We only got.
Working?
No, it's not working. Yes, ma'am? Oh, here?
I heard it wasn't working.
All right, it's not working. I mean, we fix it, we go out for a little while, and it breaks down.
We got one.
We got one.
No, we don't have one.
We got nothing.
All right. So, council, I want to ask.
She says, while we have you here, before Michael gets into this, how many of you want to just make sure it's not just me? How many of you get calls about trash, litter, right-of-way maintenance, and issues regarding cleaning in your districts?
Every week.
So District 7 gets nothing, because I sure get a lot of them from District 7.
Ah.
All right, all right. But the point was, guys, that collectively, this is some, this is a common thread that we hear from, so that's why I pushed this, to bring it, and I want the manager to see your hands, because when I sent the email, he said, I didn't see any responses, so.
Mayor, that wasn't quite the full conversation.
All right.
The full conversation, the full, the full conversation.
You're getting these seven.
I get a lot. I do as well, I just will. The council, this is, this is not an issue about desire, it's not an issue about that we don't see it. It is an issue about the money. And we collectively spend, I think it's at one point.
We're going to get to that.
Come on to that. Come on to that, because I think that there's.
Before you do that, can you tell me how much an edger costs?
Well, the problem is not.
Go to, do both at the same time.
Oh, so if you got it up there, okay.
Yeah, do both at the same time. It's about $1.9 million that we spend.
For an edger?
About $1.9 million that we spend. And we can, as the mayor and I talk about, one of the reasons that it is here, that the presentation is here, is that we, we spend more, and we do more, and the mayor, Mayor Protem, and Ms. Jensen, and Mr. Hare were here when we added, at first it was $100,000, and another $100,000. Not saying that we can't and won't do more, but I need to make sure that the council understands the budgetary constraints that we're under, and, but once council has made up a decision and gives us that direction, we'll go back and look for the money if that's it. But collectively now, we're spending more than one penny on your tax rate to pick up trash, edge, and it doesn't appear to be enough. But again, it is not a lack of desire, it's not a lack of, we don't know what it takes, it is simply a lack of having available resources with the tight budget that we have. That's the issue that we're running into.
Here you can see, and this is a five-year window of how the budget has gone up and down, and right now, we're at 1.9, and this is how it's broken down that we spend on The other one, I'm going to make sure that, this is one that, every time I see this, and that's, that's 133 tons, and give you a perspective, the average.
that's 133 tons, and give you a perspective, the average trash truck holds, that you see drive through the neighborhood, holds about 13 tons of trash.
So 10 trash trucks.
We pick up. And that's litter in the course of a year. So it just goes to show you that, and me and the mayor have had some conversation, yeah, we've had some conversation. And you don't have a pickup problem. We're out there picking up trash.
What's trash?
It's, but as your city grows, as the traffic comes into this community, I love you to go to Highway 24, go to Rayford Road, go to Ramsey Street, and you see how many cars are coming into your city. So it's not like we're not out there. I mean, I think we're the only city in North Carolina who picks up trash on its right of main thoroughfares with ATVs.
Okay.
But I mean, we're just out there picking up as fast as we can get it, because if we had to walk to do that, it'd never get done.
No.
So I do have a question for you, Michael, before you-
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna go to Councilmember Ingram, but now I'll ask my question.
Councilmember Ingram?
Yes, so what I'm hearing is, and we've had this conversation before, it's a behavior issue. And so what I want to ask is, we deployed the cameras in high-risk illegal dumping areas, and the conversation was, when we deployed it, you know, I guess with Crime Stoppers, we would make a example out of the people that were illegal dumping. Are we at a place where we can say, these are your illegal dumpers?
Well, I mean, I don't want to speak for Rapid, because I'm not in that environment where they're doing that investigation. But illegal dumping can be a couch that's just fell off of somebody's car, and they just leave it on the side of the road. And there's no information about that couch. Somebody, we just gotta go get it.
But that would then be Rapid, right?
That would be Rapid, yeah.
Right. So I guess my question again is, the conversation that we had solely surrounding around illegal dumping was, if it's a behavior issue, we were interested in saying, these are illegal dumpers, don't really become illegal, because it's kind of like the parenting issue that we're seeing that we're having. How do we, really, we're doing all that we can do, from what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing, but the machine keeps breaking. But I'm just kind of going back into what our initial conversation was surrounding that.
So, just to be clear, I don't believe, and I think you do as good a job as you can do with what you have, right? So either we don't have enough people, I just don't believe that all of North Carolina litter throwers live in Fayetteville. So other cities and communities have people who throw stuff out the window, and they deal with it, and they deal with it in a way in which it doesn't look, the problem doesn't look as bad as it does here, not just litter, but maintenance overall, period, between, things growing in between the cracks on the sidewalks, to people calling me about limbs in the middle of the walkways, that they've got to go in the street to get around, to, you know, we're laying $10 million for sidewalks. How are we gonna maintain it and keep it clean? Because the ones we have, we're not doing it right now. And on September the 6th of 2022, I brought a proposal to council, which there was a consensus to direct staff to research the possibility of contracting this out. When we were smaller and obligations were less, and Doug said, you know, nobody can do it as cheap as us, and we've put more and more and more in it over time, what does it look like now? As the city has grown, the traffic has increased, is it still practical for us to hold all of it in-house? Because we saw the last situation, the outcome we want is a better product. And so we need to have the information to say whether contract or not part of it, half of it, a private contractor would have had his equipment back on the road right now, because he wouldn't have been making money to edge it if it was broken. I mean, and so I just believe that we've got to think a little different in order to get it. But what I can't accept is that this is the best we can do, period, without another 2, 3 million dollars. So, I mean, you gave a consensus on September 6th, we're a year later, where are we on that information? Did we ever get a comparison to contract any of this process out? Where are we on the follow-up of that?
Can you and Michael answer that?
Yeah.
Yep, I think one of the things that we did was, and just, and I'll make sure I get to that, here's what we contract out with DOT.
I'm not talking about DOT.
Right, but that's what we want to make sure, because those are the roads that we would be contracting out.
DOT, I understand what you're saying. We cut it for them, they send us a check for the one or two times a month or quarter to death. I'm not even talking about that. I'm talking about RFP, RFQ to another company to see if they can help maybe do a portion of what it is that you're currently trying to do. Parks and Rec is a behemoth department. This is one aspect of it, in addition to the other 99 things you've got to do, keep the fields cut, keep the buildings maintained. I just think that you have to start looking at pieces of it, and then council asks for this information, so exclude the DOT part. I'm not talking about with the state.
Oh, okay. Well, then that's what we did. We did the right of ways that we maintained for DOT, and that would be your Ramsey Street, the All-American.
So you sent a contract out to different private companies for those street highways? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the RFP went out to do those streets, those roadways.
Okay.
So that's, so those were the roadways that we would do.
Okay, well, that's fine. So do you have that information?
Well, we don't, the last time that we did it was about three or four years ago, and the numbers came back very high.
So we didn't do anything after council gave consensus on September of 2022?
The one that we did was based on the litter and the maintenance. What I wanted to do was-
So where's that one?
Well, the only thing that I suggested is that we do on-call, which we already have, through code enforcement with those businesses.
See, here's the problem. When the policy board says, we got a consensus to do something, we need to get the information back to say, this is what that result of your demand, your question was. So that's what I'm looking for today. What was the result of the consensus that said to get numbers to see if it's more feasible to contract out? I don't care if it is the state DOT main thoroughfares, that's fine, because that'll help free your crew up to do some of this other stuff. So do you have any information from contracts that went out? RFPs or RFQs?
No.
Okay. All right, Councilmember McNair.
Thank you, Mayor. Since you want to call District 7 out, I had to-
We all have to make notes.
Just for the record, I wake up every morning looking for trash, no kidding. I'm just kidding. Well, I do. I just have a question. And the guys are really prompt about coming out and cleaning up District 7. When I call, they make notes of that. And then also, I just wanted to know about the vacant lot on Bunce Row. It seems to be an area that attracts illegal dumping. What can be done about that? Because I know I've called several times, and I don't know where these couches keep coming from, but people just feel like they can just dump their couch on Bunce Row, couches on Bunce Row. And then also, on Old Bunce Row, there's a fence. Generally, people just take bags of trash and dump it there. I'm like, I'm gonna put a camera on you. Okay, so when I do call, I mean, just quick response. So what can we do about that particular lot? I know it's a vacant lot, and it belongs to someone, and I think I've-
So T-Mobile had, I connected in with IT a year and a half ago. They had a program where they put cameras throughout the city to cut down on illegal dump sites, to do it in Oakland and other places. I don't know where that was left, because they were willing to do that here. But there was some other technology to help cut down on illegal dump sites.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So we did work for T-Mobile extensively, and they released a contract to us.
Microphone.
Or a example of a potential contract with us, and it had a time limit, so it had a minimum condition of, you have to sign the contract for, I cannot remember the details, like 24 months or three years. And it turned out that the budget that was allocated by council way back about three years ago, for this effort, was not going to be able to sustain the three-year contract that T-Mobile was looking at.
So they didn't think there was a need to bring that back to council to say, maybe we find the money somewhere else?
Well, Mayor, this is one of the things. I want to start by saying, clearly you read it from the record, that we were supposed to issue an RFP. I'm not sure why we didn't do that, but it does not appear that we did. We have extensive history, extensive history with issuing RFPs, going back all the way to when our first came back in 2015, particularly with Mr. Art, when we tried to outsource. The reason that NC DOT contracts with us is because no one will do their roads cheaper than we will. The reason we no longer edge is because in 2009, NC DOT stopped paying us to edge, and the city manager at that time stopped edging. And that's why the equipment sat in rusted. Michael is aware of your interest in mind to find an appropriate edger that will stop the grass from growing into cracks in the sidewalk. Again, I apologize for us not following up, if that was the direction, which I believe it was clearly as you read it from last year. We will correct that. But one of the things that we have, and we've said several different things tonight, which makes it very, very tough at times for staff to comply, one is litter. Picking up litter and enforcing litter control in and of itself is an issue. There are measures that we have, which we talk about a litter index. And so if we take a look at the litter index that favor beautiful users, we should be able to tell you whether or not we have more litter or less litter as the years have progressed, because that's why we do it. That's one. We also have the idea of cutting grass, which is something, which is, is not necessarily edging. Edging where the curb and the road meet and the grass grows over it, that's two. Then you have grass growing in cracks in sidewalk, which is three. No cities, big cities, who can't get a lawnmower into on an all-concrete area, they will actually have a torch. You walk along with a torch, and you burn the grass clippings out. Again, we don't have that issue here. The fourth was one that we experienced with Councilmember Thompson, where you actually have material growing out of storm drains. You also have litter in storm drains that you and I have talked about. Then you have the overhangs from private property that block access on sidewalks and roads. And Michael has, over the last two, three years, actually bought a special mower that has an arm one that allows us to, you set it on Rose Hill Road. This is, and then let's not even talk about the grass that grows in cracks in the road that we see as well. This is a multi-tiered issue. Again, I apologize that we did not respond appropriately to the request that council made. But when we talk about why we didn't pursue T-Mobile is because, I don't know, I didn't remember all of that, Sheila. But every year that we work with the budget, the council has rightly pushed back on staff's recommendations, as you should as the policy board, for when we come back and talk about what it costs for us to do solid waste services in the community. That's where some of this would be paid for, same with illegal dumping. This year, like last year, and the upcoming year are all very, very, very tight budget years, as we struggle to with the competing demands. And again, I apologize that we have not come back to you and talked about the pressures that we're facing, and necessarily in the edger, which, Michael, I wouldn't be smiling, because it's one of those situations where it's broke, and we don't know about it until it's over at Voss getting fixed. But clearly, we owe you some more information on this, and I would ask if the direction and interests of council is for us to do more. We're happy to put that out for a bid, we're happy to bring in more temporary contractors. But I again go back to what I've shared.
I had the money.
Is the real concerns that staff, the pressure that staff has, is not a desire to do it, it's not a desire, for lack of knowing how to do it. It really is about the sustainability and the resources that we have. And we did cover this when we had our budget workshops this past, back in May and June, and we told you that we were planning to underspend your approved budget by 18 million dollars. And so that's one of the reasons, Mayor, that I requested, and am so glad that you brought this. Because when we get back to May or to June, or if we talk about where we are so far as in fund balance and other issues like that, I often feel like I'm the person that stands in between what you want to do and the resources to get it done. And I feel like I'm having to tell folks no. I apologize that we did not put it out, because it wouldn't have cost us anything to put that RFP out. And we will track that out, and that won't happen again. But I cannot apologize for the fact that we do not have the money and the resources. Even tonight, there was a desire for us to add more code enforcement officers. Even tonight, we had the internal audit committee meeting. There was a request by members of this board and the audit committee to add additional internal auditors. We are looking to extend a route on Hope Loop Road, and we're working on video for that. The pressures that we have in the budget are unreal. But again, council, apologies for not having that RFP, that won't happen again. But I do, would welcome the direction if it is, not only just saying we want this, but also making sure that we have the money and understand what the implications of that will be long-term on the city's budget.
All right, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that, Doug. But my question would be, can we do some of the small things? Can we get some do not litter signs? Can we get communities to adopt a street? Can we get cameras for some of these illegal dumping locations? Some of the things that, it takes everybody to get involved. It takes everybody to keep a community clean. I mean, I live off of Rayford Road. I take 295 all the time. I applaud them when I see them cutting the grass and picking the litter. But guess what? Two days later, it's jacked up again.
They're out there this weekend.
The same day.
So we have, so we have to, we have to hold people accountable. We can't do it all.
It's the same day.
We can't. We have to take measures to let them know that if you do this, there's a price you're gonna have to pay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, you women in here?
Yeah, so thank you, Councilmember Thompson. That's what I was saying the whole time. But I do want to add, we do have cameras, but I think the question that I have more, and I know this is Rapid, but I think the question that I have more is, one, can we move the cameras around? Because I think if people see that flashing light, that they are being recorded. Some may still dump, some may say, okay, let me go west Fayetteville, or let, they're not going east Fayetteville, but let me, I'm east, they're not going north.
North.
Yeah, they're not going north, but let me, let me go somewhere else, you know, and dump. But they're finding new dumping locations because they may see the cameras. This is all behavioral. And so I'm wondering, do we need to, one, buy more cameras? Of course, I think Jody and Lauren have already captured enough to say, we need to ramp up on this in a PSA mainstream way. But do we need to buy more cameras?
So if I could speak to that a moment, what the T-Mobile project did was use, you know, we've got a lot of cameras throughout the city already, life plate readers and other cameras. So they basically laid it out to where you track a vehicle that's a potential. And then you can use some algorithm to guess some of the sites that they may go to if they get so close to it.
So what I'm hearing is that maybe could we just revisit, did she say that we weren't working with them and we didn't renew?
Yeah, well, it was, when I initially connected them, they had a conversation about what they could do that we bought into. But then she's saying that they wanted a three-year commitment, but they didn't bring it back to us. See, we're the policy budget board. It goes to his point. If he comes back and says, in order for you to do this, this is what it costs if I contracted out, this is what it costs if we do it, or you have to make a decision because we only have so many pennies in this dollar. That is the kind of conversation that I'm just trying to get us back to. Then we can prioritize, because we may go to something else, to say, this was less important to my constituents than cleaning up this place. You know, because at the end of the day, we're sitting here trying to represent what it is. And I'll tell you for a fact, I hear this just about as much as I do anything else about how things look, so. But it's something that could be worked out, Councilmember Ingram, so I think that's a proposal too. Chief had given a proposal for more cameras for other safety purposes. Maybe they can be utilized for that too. So I don't, you know, I don't know. But Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. Great discussion, another one of those important discussions. I sent a council request, and I'm still waiting to get some additional feedback on it. But one of my constituents brought to my attention, don't just put the do not litter signs up. Mr. Hare, would you consider having staff to put the do not litter sign up with a phone number? Okay? And because we have to use all the tools. I mean, we got to use the tools to say, okay, do not litter. Well, then you call this number, you know, just think about how many people just might, you call that number, and if it's special, if it's, what is it, 16, 13, 29 number, 431 Fayette? I thought it was an excellent idea. Of course, I did share that with my council request. You know, give the residents some additional options.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, well, don't litter.
Right. Right.
But maybe the next person may see, don't litter, say, okay, let me just.
Let me call and report this truck.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. All right. I think she's spoken.
Now, I need to.
Oh, okay, okay.
You cut me off earlier.
Oh.
Yeah, you did. So.
I apologize.
Thank you. I'm just curious about the sidewalks again. I noticed that in First School Row, we have a small sidewalk rack that ends, but it had grass growing from it. And then I noticed that there was some brown trees along the way, and then the grass started to turn brown on the sidewalks. Are you guys spraying weed killer around the city of Fayetteville? Okay, my next question is.
And ma'am, if you could on that, Michael, when did we start doing that again?
Well, we do it twice a year.
Well, when did we, when did we reinitiate that? Because there was a point that we were not.
Well, I mean, we weren't doing it during the COVID environment. We just started back in 2021. But we are spraying. That was the slide that I had up earlier.
Uh huh.
Where we start in the spring of the year, we're probably in March to try to catch it before. And then we do it again periodically through the year, and then we try to get it again at the end of the year. We're even working with DOT to help us spray.
Okay, so with the grass that is brown now, what's going to happen next? Is the wing going to take it away?
No, ma'am. Well, now that we've stopped cutting grass.
Yes.
Then we'll send those guys out and they'll be doing sidewalk maintenance.
Okay. I'm just a little concerned, okay. Did you find that hole in Bunch Row, Mayor?
I don't know, I said it there.
Okay. Okay.
All right. All right, Ms. Gibson, Mr. Hill.
Ask about the edges as well, Mayor.
Oh, yeah. So the cost of a new edger, Mike, I know they're trying to resurrect this one, but.
They don't make them anymore.
So what do people use to edge grass now?
Motor graders.
So the cost of a motor grader?
Ooh. That's crazy.
About $179,000.
At least. It's a motor grader.
Okay, so there's no more edges that connect to a tractor?
No, sir. Not to do commercial, not to go up and down major minor thoroughfares. We've been working with Voss Equipment over the last two years to try to, and we can patch it for a while, it just doesn't last. I mean, you'll get out good, and I mean, you'll see us on family or a country club, and we might get that done, and then it's.
Are there any other from used equipment options around that you can buy another one like we have?
We're trying. We're trying to find a company who made the one that we actually have. I mean, we're getting brushes made special from a company to attach to it so it'll spin the grass off the curb once we cut it.
Let me just keep it simple. Do we, do you have anybody that sells this auxiliary components?
No, sir. But we don't get it made.
In America?
We don't get it made. No, it's not in America. If I'm telling you, let me tell you, if I could find that thing, we would get it done. I mean, I think the biggest thing is, and we're going to have conversations, the one thing that I want to make sure that I, that from a clarity standpoint, I think the biggest thing that gets caught up in litter maintenance, right-of-way maintenance, mowing grass, is the frequency that we do it. I think that's where, once we come back with the conversation and the RFP goes back out, that's the conversation that I'd like to have because right now, we have a contract with a company that does 200 vacant lots for us, $65,000 a year. And the frequency that he comes and mows those vacant lots for us, whenever he gets behind, he's behind, and it looks bad. The thing that I think that we should do, once we come back and have this conversation, is the on-call list, where you may have 10 or 15 companies out there that we can call if I get behind, if it's a rainy season, we get behind in a week and it's all over, is that we are able, if we have the budget now, if we have the budget, to then say, here are three companies that I can deploy in four different areas to get me caught back up. To me, that would be, that would be the answer. Because that's what it is. It's the frequency that I can get there and get back if we get caught in a rainy season. And if that's the kind of conversation that I hope we could have, I think we can solve issues quicker because we have people on-call who can jump out and get things done quickly.
Okay. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gibson, I just have one question. Is it better for us to contract somebody or to hire and have our own?
Like I said, it depends on the frequency that you want it done with. Now, when we go out, when we go out and do parks, we make sure that when the public goes to the park, it's at a level-one service. Right-of-way maintenance is not a level-one service. We do it every other week. So you can see us on Ramsey Street, and you can go over to Owen Drive, and it's not mowed. Now, the following week, we'll be on Owen Drive to make sure it's mowed, but if you go back on Ramsey Street, it's not mowed.
I just want to look at the numbers. If you say you pay $65,000 to clear four vacant lots.
No, 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 no. It's 200.
Okay.
200 lots.
Okay, well, 200 lots.
Yeah.
That's 600.
Just to cut them.
Just to cut them. I'm getting to my point. I'm getting there. Follow with me.
Okay.
In 10 years, that's $650,000. What could we have done as far as buying equipment? And how many personnel could we have hired to done that and more over 10 years?
I don't know. At our rate and stuff.
We actually, all of that. We actually did that prior to, I think, putting it out. And we would get complaints, Mr. Hill remembers those, about, would get complaints about a lot, and we'd track it down in code enforcement. It was one that Victor owned. And we would have to go out and cut. But it is, it is a frequency issue and quality issue.
Let me just say this. I'm not suggesting you take the whole department and contract it out. Like, that was some previous council members go that trash. I don't think you can do that. But what I'm saying is, you may supplement help, like he's saying they do for grass cutting, you know, maybe on right-of-way maintenance. And then you've got to put these RFP out for more than a year because nobody's going to invest time and money in the equipment for a year RFP. You know, at least, at least be a five or 10 years so that it can make sense for them. But I know we've got to get more, we've got to tighten this up. So other communities have figured it out. I'm sure you guys know how to figure it out, but, you know, so that's, that's all I've got to say. Anybody on this, Joe?
No, I mean, if.
Any action needed?
Well, I don't know. We're still waiting on action from 2022, so. So maybe it'll, it was just a.
Do we step in?
I think they heard it. Yeah, I think we got it. I think we got it. All right, thank you. Yes, sir. All right, second half, second half. We've got a second half up here.
It's going to be about the time we get done, second half.
Good evening, Council. Public Services is going to discuss two aspects of the.
All right.
Can you hear me?
All right.
Good evening, Council. Public Services will discuss two aspects of right-of-way maintenance. One is largely the hard assets on the streets, which will be, I'll be introducing you to a new staff member that we have for that, and the other would be solid waste. So I'd like to introduce you to Craig Allen. He's a new position that we have, actually, it's a converted position. He's the right-of-way infrastructure manager. His position is really, I'm really excited about the position, is dedicated towards really focusing on the hard assets in our streets, which would be curb and gutter, sidewalk, so on and so forth, catch basins. And the focus here is maintenance. It's not reconstruction or building new sidewalks and so forth. It's the hard assets and maintenance. And so what that means is this individual will be really looking at what are our assets? What is the service level of those assets? What is our, what are our resources? What is, for example, if we're interested in sort of making sure that we clean all our catch basins three times a year, what amount of staff do we have, and can we actually maintain that or do that? So I'm really excited about this position. Another thing that this gentleman will be doing is bringing, modernizing our street division, whereby we'll be using technology to input service orders and so on and so forth. So with that, I'll turn it over to Craig, and he's going to talk about a couple of aspects that the street does regarding the hard assets, and then we'll turn it over to Daniel to talk about solid waste.
Michelle, before you get into your presentation, is it possible to connect all Pittsburgh dealer-related items to be removed?
I was thinking that. All right, sir.
Michael would have been called in.
Well, Mayor, I probably could help you with that. Daniel, does that have a safety clasp on the back? Does it? Because if not, it's not approved. You got to have it where it breaks away. You two, Dave, does this break away if it like gets caught in a piece of equipment?
Yeah. Yeah. See?
All right, well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm glad to be here today and to present to you. So today, I kind of want to go over some of the assets we have. We currently have 11 sweepers with seven full-time employees, employed positions, that is. We have two vacancies at this time. We have six zones, I'm sorry about it, we have six zones and two NC DOT routes in which we sweep. And currently, there are 1,736 curb miles of streets that are swept, 234 of those being NC DOT roadways. Streets without curb are not swept. We got the city zones. I'll back up to this one. So city zones are swept quarterly, and NC DOT zones are swept quarterly as well, and additional sweeping was done as needed. So within the catch basin inspection and maintenance, there are over 14,000 catch basins in the city. Currently, our key performance indicator is 1,500 catch basins per month. With the new National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, they're going to require the cities to start prioritizing the catch basins into three categories. In priority one, we're going to have to inspect, maintain those three times a year. Category two, two times a year. And category one, one time a year. This equates to about 2,350 inspections per month, which is a 63% increase. So in fiscal year '25, we'll probably be looking to add positions to accommodate this increase from the program. Slide, so currently in the city, we have 297 miles of sidewalk, and we're looking to add another 10.6 miles this fiscal year. Sidewalk repair is complaint-driven, and services include milling and patching and And we typically use the city's on-call service to help repair sidewalk as needed. Our current fiscal year date, we've done 170 linear foot of sidewalk repair. And for potholes, our KPI target is 450 tons of asphalt per year, and fiscal year to date, we've done 196.2 tons. So our guys are out there, they're working, they're making the improvements. And the potholes are done also as complaint-driven, and as our crews are out on the roads and see them, they also report them, and we get out there and take care of those. And with that, does anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir, we do. Councilmember Hill has a question.
Yes, sir.
And.
Thank you, Mayor. Milling.
Hundreds of them.
Which I just, just really have never liked. And if that is, if I'm understanding that process, if that is the process where the asphalt begins to split and you pour the, I guess, the liquid asphalt in through the crack, and I've said this for years, and maybe, I'm pretty sure I'm going to get an explanation, I see no purpose of that process. And what I was just wondering, if that is a process that could be eliminated, would there be a savings of that process that can be used toward from additional paving? Or if it's a very, very nice street, even additional support of using the slurry method?
Mr. Hill, we can, that wasn't what, we don't have that staff here tonight. But we can, this was part of a larger presentation that probably half of the council members were not on to hear, which are pavement preservation techniques. And that whole presentation, you have, yes, sir, but some if not. And that whole presentation talks about the slurry seal, it also talks about the cape seal, talks about the crack sealing. And it is very useful because what you're trying to do with that, I call it the tar, which is probably something different than that, is to blow it out, treat it, and to make sure that you don't have grass growing up and water getting in the middle. Then when it freezes, it actually deteriorates your street much faster. I know I left some of that out, and Sheila's looking at me really crazily like it, but I think I got enough of it together. But if it is your interest and probably definitely something that we can do, we can probably look at bringing that back. I'm not sure when, but Sheila, do you have additional information that you can add on that? But it is a much larger conversation.
I don't have to, I don't have to have that brought back. I just know that that's a process of, I guess we call it paving or resurfacing, that I never thought did any good for our neighborhood streets.
Particularly when that's the only thing you see is just the crack sealing, and it looks like it's just a bunch of lines on the asphalt.
Right, and I just want to note to that, to my knowledge, we don't do that anymore, where we're just sealing the cracks and leaving the neighborhood. We have moved away from that because that was not what this board wanted and our community wanted, and we've moved to milling and then resurfacing, so, or slurry sealing. Is that correct? That group no longer does crack sealing and then completing the street then.
Yeah. And I was, and I kind of understood that because I just kind of went through this, and I was just kind of sharing it with my colleagues. But the sealing, but nevertheless, I won't, I won't.
Milling I was referring to here is just to remove trip hazards from sidewalks.
Say that again, sir.
This is milling just on sidewalks to remove trip hazards and things like that.
All right, Councilmember Mahendra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Mayor of Proton. Slide 18, I think, you were talking about the catch basins regarding to the new MPDS permit. There's 14,000 some out of them, are those all public?
14,069. That's city streets only. That doesn't include anything off right-of-way private streets or NC DOT redways.
So in the priority one, I guess that's category one, that heavy sediment, we don't, we don't, don't even remove the sediment, right? So who's responsible for removing the sediment?
We currently have a KPI of 1,500 inspections per year, and that's including inspections and maintenance. And we'll go out and we'll clean and inspect 1,500 basins per year. But the new program is going to require us to do.
Per year or per month?
I'm sorry, per month. So that's our current KPI. We've been meeting that number or exceeding it. I've only been in this position a week, but I have gone back and looked at the data, and we have had some months where we've had 2,300. So, I mean, we're definitely exceeding those numbers. But some months where we've had to take crews and put their efforts somewhere else, we've done less. So we're looking at an average of 1,500 per month.
I guess my question is, let me ask it a different way. So upon inspection, if we see that there's sediment that needs to be removed, do we do that?
Yes. Yes, we clean them out. We use jet vac and like that and clean them out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Now, Michelle, you just said public right-of-way. So are we doing neighborhoods as far as these catch basins?
We are, any city-maintained street.
So.
We are going out and cleaning basins.
Okay. So here's my question. You had a construction crew repairing a catch basin on Hidden Forge in my community. But there was another damaged basin on Ancon. So if they're being inspected, how did they determine that that one was damaged and the one that is damaged doesn't need repair?
I would have to look into that specifics.
Okay.
That could have been one that was just simply reported and not necessarily an inspection being done.
So that's what you meant by complaint-driven?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Benavente.
When it comes to street cleaning, is everything on a regular cycle or circuit? And what's the best way for a community or a particular neighborhood or street to find out where they are on the docket?
I don't know that, but I can find that information for you.
Yeah, please let me know. Thank you.
Did y'all have a...
We don't have a formal process.
All right, Councilmember Meagre, we have a question.
Yeah, so I will say to the street, street sweeping, is that what you were referring to, street sweeping, it doesn't matter, much like, and I get this concern in District Two a lot, that some communities get their street sweeps while other communities don't get their street sweeps. Just like how we have the schedule for solid waste, where we can go online and check what week we are, could we implement the same thing for street sweeping?
What, we can, we can try to look at that, or the place that we really want to go, and it seems like it's been somewhat elusive, is actually have GPS on them so that you can actually go back and see where they was. We have some of that, and Sheila, do you have anything on that?
Yeah, so we, we tried to launch that program with GPS, and in fact had cameras from the horizon. The horizon changed how the state relayed information back and forth, and so we were unable to have it where it was actually put online, and people could go see where the street was awesome and so forth. But now with Craig Allen here, we're going to be able to hopefully resurrect that process and see if there's new technology out there that will help us do that for two purposes. One, for us to monitor our crews, and second, for us to make it for the community to understand what street was on and when to come back.
And one of the things that Michael would echo, too, is just as temperamental as the edger was, some of these sweepers that we have are beyond temperamental. And it's just the nature of how they work. And so while Craig may be down two vacancies, he's usually down two sweepers, too. So it is, I mean, when I first came into local government, I didn't think they actually worked, but when you actually look at the volumes of stuff that they pick up off of the, and prevent from going down in your drains, because that's really what you're after. You're really after trying to make sure that certain things don't wash down into the stream. It's not necessarily for cleanliness. But Mayor, if there are no other questions, what I was hoping we could do is like we did at the earlier item, could you restate what you're looking for? We've got the one on the edging and cutting and mowing, but there was a recent question as well. Have we, oh, you've got more, Daniel?
Well, Daniel's speaking on public sessions.
Okay.
Please speak your house.
No, no.
We do, we do a lot in the right way. We do a lot.
Good evening. Now for the exciting part of the night. We're excited to report to you, yes, sir, aren't they? We're excited to report to you about Rapid Services, Solid Waste Code Enforcement, car services, and where we're going. The vision for Rapid, the vision for Rapid actually came through Brooke Redding, and I wanted to thank him on record for bringing this vision and this program to the city of Fayetteville. In two thousand twenty-two, in a work session, I presented to council regarding service limits and increased Rapid staff, and we discussed the following slide about the goals for Rapid Services, which is the number one, which is education, and then cost saving, cost savings, excuse me, efficiency, consistency, and predictability. And through the Rapid Services program that we're going, that I'm going to discuss with you really quickly tonight, we're going to reduce our knuckle boom routes from ten to seven. How we're going to do that is through route sequencing, each route for greater efficiency and manpower, and Rapid Code Enforcement for Solid Waste. They're going to have ownership of these curbside compliances for their specific routes. It's going to help keep the city cleaner through the education and enforcement. So right now, Rapid is only response-driven. It's right now, not just, you know, Rapid and Solid Waste trying to get things, it's response-driven only. And so right now, we have staff that cover the east and the west side, and that's for illegal dumping. Then we have the other Rapid, not the other Rapid, but not only do they do the illegal dumping, but they also have to cover all the tags that come in through Solid Waste employees, all the calls that come in through the call centers, see, click, fix emails, and try to educate all at the same time. Currently, Rapid tracks illegal dumping, which is collected on Wednesdays, investigates and enforces, like I said, all the tags and curbside compliance. The process that I'm about to share started two years ago, when I came to you at the beginning of when we started doing every other week collection for bulky and limbs. Council added knuckle boom trucks and staff based on the struggle to keep up with the limbs and the bulky piles in our neighborhoods. Now we've come full circle in this year's budget, that you approved the modifications of positions needed to educate and enforce curbside compliance. And I will briefly explain how Rapid is about to proceed moving forward. So moving forward, we're going to have a Rapid supervisor that will ensure the following process happens. After we train staff and we get caught up on old NOVs and tags, we're going to have five Rapid staff that will drive two routes a day. These are the same routes that we have the knuckle boom trucks driving now, but we're going to have a smaller vehicle that's more gas-efficient and all that, so that they can cover more ground. Instead of one route, they'll be able to do two routes, and then they're going to report this to the route administrator using survey one, two, three. The survey administrator is then going to sequence those routes. So that means, instead of the knuckle boom trucks driving all over Jericho's Wall, we're going to know where the stops are, and we're going to specifically pinpoint where they are, and we're going to tell them the most cost-efficient way to get there using technology. The knuckle boom operators are going to collect those items, and simultaneously, we're going to have another Rapid staff that's going to be looking at illegal dumping, and we're going to be collecting, we're going to do half the city on Monday and then go collect it. Then we're going to inspect the other half on Thursday and then go collect it. So every week, over a hundred stops are going to be looked at and collected every week for illegal dumping. So we're trying to go above and beyond to help keep this city clean through this new Rapid program. Any questions? Every week, sir. Trust me. Trust the lady, sir. Trust the lady, sir. Trust the lady. But, but solid waste can, sir.
There you go. All right, any questions, comments? All right, well, that sounds exciting. Certainly, you know, we, we, I like the fact that, one, you said the education is done sporadically. So you have to be consistent with trying to get the behavior to change. I think that is something we, we can all learn from across the board to get some, increase the ownership by our citizens. And then, two, having a constant eye on this, because I don't know how many times I just ride by something, see it and report it, but if your guys are going on the same path repeatedly, then it should cut down on a lot of that. So, because sometimes a large item will be beside the road until the following week.
The following week, yes.
When somebody happens to just go by there. So do appreciate that. I am, did want to know if, I'll talk to you offline about it. I had an incident where I proposed a question, and he was pretty upset about it. It was just yard, yard contained waste. I'll catch you at the end of this. Any other questions, comments? All right. So, Council, that bus road down there. All right. Councilmember...
Not bus road, it's fine. It's run road. I just wanted to say to, like I said, you guys did a wonderful job at Sunset Motorhome Park.
Thank you, ma'am.
I drive through there every week, checking, and it's amazing. How many tons of, no, I'm just kidding. But you guys have done a great job, and still doing a great job.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I'm checking on you every week.
And that is something that, you know, I did participate with Councilmember McNair in that, it's kind of like a walk now, but they had solid waste guys to come right behind it. And so there was some calls I got in a couple other districts. I'll say offline today that people wanted to know, or I think could benefit from that, that we might need to do that, to help the collective process.
Great job. Thank...
All right, so what we've heard, I hope the staff heard, that there's interest to bring us back some options about what it is to increase these service levels. Let us make the budgetary call about whether it makes sense or not. They're going to send out some RFPs. I understand Fayette State and some other places did some long-term contracting on some of their landscaping. So, so not just a year or two, you know, maybe do it where there's actually some interest by the local private sector. Not everything, just the areas that might free you up the most, you know. So any other, any other thing that we failed to capture, Council? Mr. Thompson?
No, 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 sorry, ma'am, just, I'm stuck on the...
He got, he got them figures in his head.
It's better to hire what you can control.
I don't know what it is, but, but I know, I know when they get backed up right now, when there's a, when there's a hurricane, right? We don't have enough trash trucks and equipment to pick up everything in a timely manner.
We actually contract that out.
So we contract that at peace out.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the smartest things that they did long before I got here, was use protocol. There's no way that we could ever have gotten out of their mouth.
That's right.
Yeah.
Can we keep it?
Right, yeah, because with FEMA, you have ninety days to get it, so it's a certain circumstance.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor. I'm saying, as the city grow, we need to learn how to be self-sufficient.
Oh, yeah.
You can't always depend on somebody else to do what you need to be, get done in your city.
Right. All right, anything else? All right, thank you.
Turn the clock.
All right, so we got these five-minute councilmember requests, we'll run through them. Madam Clerk and Deputy Clerk, I'm sure you'll have the timer in hand. As we move through, we have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six items. Should be thirty, half hour.
Can we move, can we move some stuff around?
Yeah, so oh, oh, nine and ten are coming after five.
So this nuisance business is...
Yeah.
Eventually.
Just let me know when you're ready, Madam Clerk.
I apologize, it's loading. We'll go ahead and start my other timer until this one kicks in.
All right, so Council, this, this kind of dovetails into some of the conversation we were having earlier about nuisances. I know that the chief had, had been having some conversation about nuisance behavior businesses, working with the alcohol law enforcement, who is a lot more equipped to pursue this. These are, these are, you know, numerous calls for service. These are, are just places that happen to be hotspots that are contributing to the, to a larger scenario of the crime activity. I know earlier tonight, we talked about code enforcement violations and nuisances there. This was more so on the business side of it, that, that if you have some places that are not good actors, that are either out of compliance with activity, with calls for service, you have some businesses that had over, you know, over two thousand calls for service in a, in a period examined for various things. I wanted to see if we could get legal engaged to see what it takes, or how we can define what it is, how far we can go as a, as a community, as to what constitutes a nuisance. Or some of these repeat offenders who come in compliance and come right back out of compliance, like you were saying about the Shenandoah property, from a business perspective. And so I think it, it has a portion of it that can, that was related to the earlier discussion, but I'm, I'm really talking about the criminal element and setting up an environment that, that causes us to be strained from a law enforcement standpoint. They had a question.
Yes, sir. So are you saying, Mayor, are you saying that you're not, you're not asking what constitutes nuisance, nuisance abatement, are you? Because shouldn't we have that already?
Yeah, so we have a policy that says what, what it looks like. We want to take a look at it and see if that is still the best policy. And then I wanted to see if legal could also see what the state's limits are to us, because we can't go farther than what the state says. We can't. But I didn't want to engage staff and legal too heavy without getting the consensus from council to authorize them to come back with that. So that's what the ask was tonight.
So what constitutes the nuisance abatement? And if it is to move forward, then just how far we can go with it to make whatever that correction is? Because I remember back in the day, it meant that the neighborhood could ask for the people to move in a particular area or something along that line.
Right, and so there may be some statute that consists of what you can and can't do once it's determined. But what do we call a nuisance? You know, if there's, is it two thousand calls for service, is it fifteen hundred, is it a thousand? You know, how many do we have in some of these particularly bad areas and actors that, that are operating under what the council's old version of what they have?
Are you saying we don't have that, where they can send it to us?
We have something, but I'm not sure quite what it is. Legal had gave me a little something, but, but now we need to take a look if, if you've got an interest in doing so. There were a couple hotels and a couple of other establishments that presented it. Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I remember us having a conversation, because I believe I brought it up during one of my councilmen's requests about property that are nuisances. I think we were talking about Aftonshire, and we were talking about one time that it's a nuisance. So what quantifies a nuisance, and how do we go about moving forward to do something about these policies, whether it's a business or whether it's personal property?
Yeah, I think Council...
How many, I think the question was, how many calls does it take for it to be considered a nuisance?
Yeah, and so that, that's, that's the kind of information. I don't, I don't know that we had a clear answer to that earlier, but the attorney's issue certainly, certainly can weigh in on how we get to that point now, but...
So you're just asking for a consensus, for us to ask the attorney to move forward?
Yeah, to have her come back with, with specifics on that, as well as, you know, the limitations as to what the law says we can and can't. Yeah.
So if that's a motion, I'll say.
All right, any other questions or comments on that? All right, shove hands, discussion? All right, shove hands on that. All right, so she'll, she'll come back with that. All right, thank you, Council. All right, moving forward. Oh, Councilmember Banks-McGrawson? All right, all right, so moving to, I think we moved four point oh, nine and ten. Councilmember Benavente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just shot everyone an email as well, just in case you guys wanted to kind of look at an example of what I'm discussing. The purpose of this councilmember request is to direct staff to budget for increased programming slash staff at our rec centers, to offer skills, training, to navigate conflict resolution. When I talk with young people at these rec centers, they really are asking for this. They really are saying that the difference in, you know, what escalates into gun violence really is giving them the tools it takes to resolve conflict amongst themselves. And we know that there are worship centers locally that are already doing some of this work. They're picking up young people from neighborhoods that may not be, or young people don't have access to transportation, to basketball courts. And while they're there at the church, they're ministering. They're giving them some of those tools that they need just to be, you know, well-rounded young people. So I think, you know, we can lean on them to be partners in this effort as well. I want to include some cost-effective incentives, because I think that what it takes for a young person to want to come in off, you know, their games or their friends to want to learn something, might require some kind of incentive, all of which is going to cost less than the cost of gun violence or losing our young people to the streets. My recommendation is that we even pilot this program. We know that there's three rec centers that are in the center of the three one-mile radiuses that ShotSpotter identified, or the police identified, rather, as most likely to have the next instance of gun violence. So this may not be anything that we need to do across the board. I think Smith Rec, Clifdel Rec, and potentially wherever, you know, Massey Hill Rec, I believe it's called, could benefit from this, can be a place to start. The example that I emailed you guys about is one particular option, one particular program. It's called Coaching Boys Into Men. It's the only evidence-based violence prevention program that trains and motivates high school coaches to teach their young male athletes in healthy relationship skills, mental health practices, and that violence never equals strength. There are twelve weekly discussions. This is an example of the kind of programming and the kind of modules that we could be working with our young people in. It doesn't have to necessarily be this one, but I thought this was a great example of what exists out there. So if our staff could, you know, vet some of those, offer some of those, I'll pause there.
Questions?
All right. Councilmember Benavente, first of all, let me say, I'm all for youth de-escalation. I think you and I had talked offline about that. So is the ask today for the staff to come back with recommendations on how we can implement that into some of our existing facilities, particularly these high-target areas that have issues? Or I heard you say something about budget. That's what's got me confused.
We just know it's going to cost some kind of...
Well, they would come back with the options, I'm saying, because I don't know that the city has the capacity to stand up someone to go in there, but there may be agencies who are already in this space that use our rec centers or something. So is that the ask that you're saying?
That's right, sir. So if that's what staff ultimately ends up saying, exactly what you described, then that's what I would accept.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Hare, you emailed.
Yeah, and I think that's what I was asking, because I was trying to understand if you were meaning that, I, I think what I was trying to understand, were you meaning that these particular... I, I think what I was trying to understand, were you meaning that these particular, uh, three sites that you mentioned, that we would hire an additional person that does, I don't know what you call it. Right here, you were talking about some kind of training, coaching, but some type of social work-type position training? I mean...
Yeah, I, I would welcome something to that extreme, if that's what, um, is, you know, something we can afford. If it's something else, then I'd certainly want our staff to say what sort of the good, better, best options are. I think to me, the best option is to, uh, look into, how many folks do we have working in our rec centers generally? Do we need an additional person to work, you know, um, a particular shift, month, once more time a week? Or does that include a new position? I mean, I, I kind of want to explore this idea some more, and if that ends up getting you really alive, that great. If it's something we can incorporate into our existing infrastructure, then that, that's just savings, uh, costs that are saved.
And what, what age category are we talking about? Because we've got all different ages at the parks.
I, I agree. I think that, um, you know, our existing, um, programming, it would fit with what we currently accommodate for, so if that's under eighteen, that's under eighteen.
All right. All right, I think I had a hundred to name.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think it's an unfortunate truth that we are where we are. The youth is, you know, where it is today, where conflict resolution is, is not one of their strong suits. So I, I'm prepared to make a motion. Um, we have to invest in our, in our youth. The youth is our future. And if we don't invest in, in the youth, what are we investing in? So whenever you guys are ready, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Well, it's his, so.
Yeah, second it all, whatever. All right, Counselmember Hare?
Yeah, so my brain goes a few different directions when I, when I hear about it. I'm in support of it, but I just want to make sure a couple of things. Does this include what we're doing with the Community Safety Micro Grants? Because people have the ability to take that micro grant and do exactly what you're saying. It's just a matter of saying, hey, we have this, can you do this with this? My next thing is, when we were having the discussions about the resource center and we were talking about, uh, pipeline, workforce development, there was an interest for us to lean into the social work program at Fayette State University. And I'm a firm believer that we have to kind of use what's in our, our backyard. So if that's the case, I know there's work study, I know that they can get on-hand, on-hand training. So if we can say, hey, we have these rec centers, whatever, you know, opportunity that we have for these students at Fayette State or wherever else, there's a social work program, and I'm only using social work because that's what I heard you just say, then we can lean into them too. So I think what I'm saying is if we move this forward, can we implement those into this as well?
Of course.
Thank you.
Counselmember Jensen?
Thank you. Um, I, I'm prepared to support this, especially since you said eighteen and below. I'm very prepared, but what I, there is one thing that I did not like. And I know it was just something that you said, let me look at. But if we're going to do it for males, we need to do it for females too. I just want to make sure that we have that for the record, because what we were given.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
All right, just one more question, so I'm making sure. So you're saying we're asking for partners, or we are also asking for staff to come?
So I think the consensus now is to get staff to come back with opportunities for partnerships, collaboration.
Call is feasible.
Yeah. All right, show of hands on those who support, all right. All right, moving to item four point zero one zero.
Uh, the concept here, I'm sure you guys have heard of Teach For America before, uh, where for young people who want to get into teaching, may not have the, uh, means, uh, to, to get that type of education, can get their tuition and supplies paid for as long as they sort of commit to serve in a rural area that they place you. So it's a similar concept as that, uh, but I'm talking about a pipeline to city employment. We know that we've got vacancies in Fayette Police Department, um, Fayette Fire Department, um, potentially even code enforcement, IT and other areas, so am I absolutely. And, you know, there's programs, um, at FTCC and FSU, uh, that can really, really be pipelines to that city employment. If the barrier for a young person is to say, hey, I'm really thinking about it, but I really don't think I want to risk, you know, my ability to pay for it, can we mitigate that risk? Can we lower that barrier by offering some kind of grant, uh, some kind of incentive? And again, we kind of program it to say, and then as soon as you're complete, or even while you're going through it, we've got a place for you here in the city of Fayetteville. Uh, so I think it's just another opportunity to try and, um, you know, make Fayetteville a place that young people want to stick around in. Um, and if we can lower some barriers, that's something I will look into. My understanding, having talked with some seasoned, uh, members of councils, that we've done something similar before when it came to some other industries. Um, so I would want to lean on what exists currently, and maybe it's just a matter of expanding what currently exists. Um, and, you know, open to any suggestion on how to make this a viable, uh, potential program.
So two things on that, Counselmember Benevente. One, um, I think that there are some partners who are already at the table with the, uh, maybe next generation workforce. We've talked about, uh, some pathways to IT. We've talked about, you know, I'd certainly like the, the help with the vacancies of some of those other departments that we struggle with. Um, there was also some money, I think, that maybe the Fayette Tech had that they could do it. So if it would be okay to consider to maybe send it to that community, I think, which you're a part of, and let us, let us craft something that, that takes the collaboration into consideration and bring it back as a, as a recommendation.
That's right.
And move it forward to that point.
That's right.
Instead of the whole buying or bogging staff down with it, we've got a commu- a community kind of setup that could spend the time.
Yeah, I absolutely can see that there's probably some things that we've already got cooking from, you know, currently or even past that I'm sort of, uh, reiterating it now. I think with our conversation around youth crime, things like that, we're just refocusing our efforts and maybe saying this needs to go on the front burner. So, yeah, absolutely. I think that that's where it fits, that's where it should go.
Second?
Okay. Counselmember Hare? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Counselmember Jensen?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with that being said, I know that we had an earlier conversation. And right now, I do know that FTCC, the city and Fort Bragg are working exactly what you were talking about. And, um, Assistant City Manager Olivera is on that. And so what I would ask is, maybe we could, you know, move with that, because it's basically the exact same thing that you were talking about. And we can have conversations offline and, and kind of get that moving, that council can...
Yeah, Counselmember Jensen did mention something that absolutely, um, does match. I don't think it's come to full council just yet.
Right, right. Dr. Shorl had come to us, and so it was, they're, they're working it out for council.
So I think, I think both of those things, what you described and sort of what I'm talking about, absolutely, you know, overlap. And so it can all sort of come all together.
It's absolutely the same thing, and we can work on that.
Well, so I guess so what I'm hea- oh, well, I guess what I'm hearing is, if all these things are happening and then there's this committee, it sounds like it's not making it to the committee.
Yeah, this particular idea, I think, is new. That's why I think it's proposed.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. I have a second.
All right, so Counsel, uh, Mayor Paul Tim Dawkins had something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mike.
Uh, Sorrells, uh, also, I think, spoke to Councilmember Jensen, he spoke to me. There is state of North Carolina money that is available, and he says this can be used by the city and FTCC in collaboration and with Fort Bragg. So we're on to something, I'm not sure it's what we really need to lead with. Let's maybe work with Dr. Sorrells and FTCC and Fort Bragg. That's...
Yeah, even if the staff recommendation comeback is exactly that, like, you know, we're open for business when it comes to that front, and we just need to wait for them to, um, approach us with their final product. Then, you know, I'm willing to have staff say that to us.
Thank you. Was your, uh, is the motion on the floor that this gets referred to the committee, and there's no work from staff until it comes back out of committee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to, okay.
Over.
All right. Show of hands on the favor. Okay, all right, and what you need to talk?
Yes, sir. Um, so this concept here, it came to mind when I think about what the General Assembly has with their legislative aides. Um, it also came to mind when I had some members of the community tell me about, well, Marty, there's sort of a bell curve sometimes when it comes to our young people. They're all the ones who are on the far-left side, who have a lot of challenges, and there's the majority of people. But there's also the young people in this community that are doing great, and they are ready for new opportunities. They're ready for, uh, chances to really plug in, uh, and take their skills and their leadership opportunities to the next level. So I'm talking about university-level students having an opportunity, uh, to intern with councilmembers, uh, as an idea. Uh, and again, in my case personally, I would want to look to the social work department at FSU, and I would want them to come and attend, uh, my homeless and mental health committee meetings. And I would want to direct them to do some research as to some of the issues that we have. I've also talked with some folks at FSU who are, um, troubled by, you know, some of the lack of dorms and them having to compete on the rental market, and they have some interest in being able to, um, have a say in the conversations that are related around affordable housing and attainable housing. Um, and if that's something that I know that Councilmember Ingram is very interested in, her community, you know, that'd be a perfect person. I'd want to direct them to pair, uh, with her. Um, so again, we're always talking about the members of our community who are, um, you know, having a hard time. We want to work with them, but I think we should also make room and opportunity for the kids that are really superstar stellar students, that we can talk with some of these department chairs about giving them an opportunity, uh, to really, uh, have a hand on the wheel when it comes to some of these issues. Um, you know, they'll be able to, uh, improve, you know, boost up their grad school resumes. Um, we'll be able to, um, you know, really incentivize them maybe to stick around in Fayetteville as well, because they'll feel like, you know, they started something they'll want to stick around for to seep through fruition. Um, and yes, I'll stop there.
So are you saying now legislative assistants are paid? Are you saying these are paid positions?
Well, I think I would want the staff to say what's possible. If ultimately we're saying that, hey, it's a credit thing, you know, like for grade in your class, then that's what it is. I will say that I read just even this morning that, um, Chancellor Allison, um, was partnering with The Hub and making fifty paid internships available, you know. Maybe we're just part of that, you know, uh, offering, uh, that would be one of those options. Uh, so, you know, I, I'd want to leave it open, certainly for the staff to say what that looks like, what's possible. And maybe we pilot it that isn't paid now, and maybe that's something we budget for in the future if it's a success or not.
And with these, because we, we don't really have our own space like the General Assembly does, are, are these, you're saying they, they would be assigned to each council member?
I think they probably may be even committee-specific. Um, you know, if we just wanted them to sort of join us on the monthly committee meetings that we're having and be able to sort of work virtually from there, I don't think it has to be super tight at the hip or super shadowing. I think a lot of this stuff can be done over Zoom, you know, and those occasions like that. So, um, I think there's ways to make it viable for, you know, that, but I'd let the experts say how that looks.
All right, questions, comments?
I just, I would add, I think it needs to be more career-based for their direct pipeline, so that they get more support out of it, and then also we do too. Um, that we, you know, unless something changed and changes soon, we're here two years and then some may be able to stay longer, but I don't think that would necessarily be fair to the student to be tied to a council member and maybe, maybe to an area of their interests.
Nothing that's fair. I think, you know, in my mind, you know, it's for a semester. It's, it's nothing longer than that.
So if, if you could, this, that kind of ties into the previous item, then it, the, what's, what's the difference with that?
Well, I think the other one was incentivizing them to go into a actual program. I'm talking, this one is talking about kids who are already doing a program, already at university, and are maybe just looking for some experiential learning opportunities. The other one was more about kids who are not yet there.
So if I may, so...
You have a mic?
I'm sorry. So I, I think, you know, like, my son is in Wilmington, and he works for Carolina Beach as an intern and gets, and gets paid as an intern. He's getting his master's degree. So what I would say is, I, I like what you're saying. I do like what you're saying. And, Mr. Mayor, you've talked about this for a long time. And I think that with what we have going on with, um, FTCC, then that brings another partner in with FSU that we could piggyback. It is basically the same thing, and I think we'll, I think the way to make it work is we're saying the same thing and have that program do what that's doing. But as in somebody just coming and, and shadowing, I think that puts us in a very difficult situation. I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with that situation.
Well, they better be able to run fast, because I'm in and out with Jennifer.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a lot. To me, that would be a, a lot of responsibility to make sure that they're getting what they need to get out of it.
And so, and so maybe it isn't councilmember-specific. I mean, part of the work session, I think, is for us to kind of, um, actually, you know, flex this and see what works and what fits for everybody. I could see it maybe being committee-specific.
So if you, if you want to tack it to the other, that, that would probably be it, because we're right at, we're out of time.
Okay. The only difference, or distinction that I'll make, is that the, the previous pipeline one was for kids who are not yet in a program and want to get into one, and this is about ones that are already in and want more out of it. Okay.
Okay, yeah. Counselmember Hares, you had something?
I move that we, um, move this forward to, to, uh, next-gen workforce.
Well, that's kind of, I guess, a...
All right, so we're saying the same thing, so of course, uh, Counselmember Benevente, who introduced the support.
Yes.
Hares is the second.
Instead of staff, would you vote for next-gen workforce?
And then we're setting, we're on a civil part of our staff.
All right, so any questions, comments? All right, Counsel, show of...
Question. Send the staff to determine...
No, no.
So, so it was going to the committee to, to, to get it right, that the staff, when they bring it back to us, they'll have some of the details worked out, because this will take probably a, a lot more attention and discussion to get it how he's envisioning it, so. All right, show of hands, Counsel? What's wrong, Counselmember McNair? All right, moving to item, uh, four point oh seven. Benevente is hot tonight.
Well, the, the first three were certainly related to our, you know, our renewed interest in, in working on, uh, youth issues. Now we can kind of shift focus away to just some, um, separate, um, topics. Um, so the idea for a co-op grocery store, it's certainly not the first time, I think, this council has considered this option. Uh, my understanding is that the, uh, Economic Development Department has sort of said that we're open for business when it relates to that, that if someone were to say, hey, we're a nonprofit, or we're an org that wants to do this, that we're certainly set up to receive them. We haven't exactly received anybody just yet. So I guess my big ask when it comes to, uh, this particular item is that, is to ask staff, what more can we do to incentivize? What more can we do to advertise? What more can we do to maybe even, um, have some kind of workshop for maybe members of the community to then have some expert advice on how they could organize into that entity that brings a co-op grocery? Uh, because right now, you know, we've sort of said we're open to receive, but maybe we need to go sixty percent rather than be the forty percent way for someone to come up to us.
I have a question.
Uh, so, uh, hold on, you have, um, yeah, Ingram and then, uh, Hare.
Thank you. So my, my question was, well, the last time we got an update on Merchison Choice, I asked, was there space for us to do a co-op? Because I think Merchison Choice was prime, and then what we also learned when we went to Newport News, you can build it within that. Not to say that has to go in the packet that we apply for the grant, but if we're doing it under Merchison Choice, would we have to put out an RFP?
So...
Or something like that?
That's a community development question. Um, what I do know is other communities have, have done that, and they partner with their housing authority to issue something. But let me bring you an update on, on one other thing.
Okay.
So had a meeting with the chancellor and the, I won't put too much out of the development agreement that we have, Catasite One, and that was in interest of theirs with the off-campus housing and mixed-use was a grocery store operator. So it could be a possibility that...
What I remember to that, and you correct me if I'm wrong, we, the corridor representatives, we did like this, I guess, a town hall that Councilmember Hill led. And I remember, and if something has changed, then something has changed, and so I just want to make sure I'm checking. That came up from the residents about the food desert in the corridor. And the response was, we kind of want to be responsible for what we're responsible for. And so what I took out of that was...
Who said that?
What I took out of that was that maybe it was more so going to be for the students, especially in this mixed-use potential, what there will come. So, which is why I asked about Merchison Choice, where it's open. And so I don't know in your detail, do you remember that conversation?
Well, I'm, I'm not saying... Well, I'm not saying that they committed to doing anything. I'm saying that was in interest for it. But at the end of the day, if it's the same model that they use for Midtown, it's not just restricted just to students, it's in the community.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I was also thinking, Mayor, that with what goes on at The Hub, with this concept, and I know The Hub has a number of concepts, you know, could that also be?
Yes, because he only has a minute. Maybe the ask is that this is something that you ask Robo, maybe reach out with FSU and others to see who's interested in. Because at the end of the day, this is a business that somebody's gonna have to operate, whether it's community-owned, whether it's institution-owned or something. But it's a business that somebody's gonna have to operate.
Whenever the farmers' market, I don't, I guess they were there last year, and maybe the year before that, I remember them.
Yeah, I initially got funded for that in fifteen, fourteen. Fifty thousand dollars, and they were recurring. But they moved it once McAllister's came in.
So I was wondering if that was something we were speaking about that could be...
So any of those possibilities. So I guess his ask maybe to be, to have staff or economic development or community development look at options, I guess.
Right. I mean, we said we're open, but maybe we need to do more outward recruitment. And like I said, if that, if the economic development department says the way that looks is this way, I want to give them a chance to tell us what that looks like.
All right. So any questions, comments? Councilmember Mahndros had a question.
You touched on it, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I was just curious.
Oh, Dawkins?
I was curious if Economic Community Development could assist with that.
Yeah, that's what I wanted.
Yeah, all right.
This is not our lane. I can't support this. We don't need to get in the grocery co-op business. Let's let FSU with Catalyst Site One, whatever, let's let them lead with this, because they have the population that they need to make sure those young people are eating right, have an opportunity, because it is a food desert. So I'd rather, let's be second fiddle to them, and this is just not our lane. Thank you.
The relationship would be not dissimilar to what we're doing with Step Up. You know, someone's gotta come and do it. You know, we're just saying that we're open for business. In this case, you know, we're just letting folks know how potentially they could get into this business.
Where's the county at with that farmers' market? They wanted to move closer to Cat One.
So I think what we need to do is, we need to have that conversation. We need to sit down and...
Oh, sit down with them?
Because I know that there is interest for that farmers' market, and I think there is grant money out there to do exactly what you were saying. But I think we're very close. And so what I would say is, maybe we need to send that to staff, and maybe that could be part, to get us part of the conversation of the farmers' market.
All right. So, all right, we've discussed it. Any other questions? All right, show of hands for those who support staff, the exploratory instructions for staff to come back, have a conversation, I guess, with Economic and Community Development and county, FSU. And they may already, so it could be, sure, all of them.
Not a consensus, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I think Brenda's in. One, two, three, four, five, six, that's six. There's a consensus. Three.
Did you raise your hand? Okay, she's not in.
All right. Yes, ma'am. All right, so he brought this as a, presented as a co-op, but from what I'm understanding is that there was an interest to see how we can support possibly any other agencies or institutions that are out here in this space. So Federal State came up, the county came up, Economic and Community Development came up to see if we were missing anything. And then at the end, Choice Neighborhoods came up.
Yeah, I want to instigate the development of such a thing. And if any one of those four are already making development, let's hear about it. And then if they're not, then I think Economic and Development Department can tell us some other ways that we can instigate.
So is this something, Councilmember Benavente, that you can do before we engage staff with it? Because it doesn't take you anything to make those circles.
It doesn't. It doesn't. It doesn't at all. I think for me, it's more like, again, I think staff saying that this is what that would look like if everything works out, you know.
But that's their concept, though. But it's your request.
That's my request. That's the direction.
All right, all right. So, all right, quickly, y'all, because the five minutes is up. Questions about this? So the Federal State Farmers Market, I bought in fourteen or fifteen, and they needed fifty thousand dollars. Council supported it to do it, to help fill the temporary gap need. Yeah, so what they did, they brought fresh groceries and they delivered it. Triple Nichols and some other people delivered it. Then it went, initially, the same money, then they got a Ford grant, a grant from Ford Foundation or somebody else, and they didn't need our money the last time.
And if staff says we need RFP, then we do.
The difference in a farmers' market and...
They brought that to us, yeah.
Difference in farmers' market and a co-op, this is a grocery store, and it is owned by the people who are in the area. Staff will have no problem at all in running that down to talk about what a co-op looks like, if that's council's direction, seeing if it's connected to something else, partnering with FSU or others. But just, we, the mayor and Mr. Hare knows how extensively the three of us worked, just the Walmart, in trying to get them to let someone else in on that lease. And so we have some contacts, but as it relates to a...
This could be an option.
As it relates to a co-op, that is something very specific. If the, but if the larger ask is a grocery store, ideally with a focus on a co-op, that may be, but a co-op is something that's not representative, yeah. But just whatever direction council wants to go in.
All those in favor?
Well, as stated, those in favor of a co-op. All right.
Yeah, that's right. All right, one, two, three, four. All right.
Is Brenda voting? What do you mean? Okay. All right, y'all, it's kind of late, then. Let's get, let's get specific. All right. So the vote is, support for this, to have staff engage in the pursuit or the analysis of a co-op. That was the specific ask.
That's right.
In the merchison report. All right. Whomever. All right, all right. So, all right, we gotta move on, y'all. One, two, three, four, that's five.
It's one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, six.
Where's the six at? Where's your hand? I'm up, all right. All right. So, y'all bring it back. Good. We made it. Move on to the next item. All right.
Well, the last item, I think city manager opened with it and gave us an update. I got some additional details as well, so that's something that I'll put for now and bring back at a future occasion.
All right. About what, all right, most to your jury, y'all?
Most to your jury.
Have a good evening.